The word that I want to lift.
Good morning, DeKalb County. I'm Robert Patrick and have the dual honor of serving as both the District One Commissioner and the Presiding Officer for the DeKalb County Board of Commissioners. To my colleagues, welcome to our regular meeting of the DeKalb County Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole for May seventeen, twenty twenty-two. Typically, we move into our printed agenda. However, with some of the events that happened over this past weekend, I was hoping that we could have a moment of silence for the families and the victims from New York as well as California. So just a moment of silence. All right. Well, with that, let us move on with our printed agenda and we'll hear the committee reports from our chairpersons. This week, we'll start with Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson and the Ops Committee. And you're on mute, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and good morning, everyone. I am Marita Davis Johnson and I chair the County Operations Committee, known as Ops. My colleagues who serve on that committee with me are Presiding Officer Robert Patrick and Commissioner Steve Bradshaw. The Ops Committee met last Tuesday, May the third. I was not at that meeting and my colleague, Commissioner Steve Bradshaw, shared the meeting and I would like to say thank you, Commissioner Bradshaw. To that end, I will yield to him in just a moment to provide any updates that he may have. So I do invite you to join us today at one P M. on D C T V Ustream channel. What we will have discussions of deteriorating signage strategy in DeKalb County. We will hear one previously heard agenda item. We have four new agenda items. And thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and with that, I yield to Commissioner Bradshaw.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I don't have anything to add to what you've presented. I think we addressed the issues that were dealt within the last committee meeting and our business meeting this past Tuesday. So at this point, I yield back to Presiding Officer.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Next, we'll hear the report from the P W I Committee chaired by Commissioner Lorraine Cochran Johnson.
Good morning. Of course, I am Lorraine Cochran Johnson. I chair Public Works and Infrastructure, where I sit alongside Commissioners Terry and Commissioner Patrick. Our last meeting was actually held on May third. Each week, we meet at three thirty P M. So feel free to join us today. During our last meeting, we heard a total of six items. Those items totaled and approved were three million, seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-two dollars. In terms of a breakdown of those items, I'll walk us through those briskly. The first item that we heard was item number fourteen, fourteen. And this particular item was a standard renewal and it was for portable toilet rentals. And these are used by Public Works Sanitation, as well as Parks and Cultural Affairs, as needed at events and work sites throughout the county. We approved this renewal in the amount of sixty-one thousand. The second item that we heard was item fourteen, thirty-five. And this particular item is a sole source and it was for the purchase of twelve thirty-nine-foot dump trailers. These particular trailers are actually used to carry sludge from Pole Bridge to Snap Finger. This particular contract I'm excited about because it was initially signed in twenty-fourteen. And previously, we have spent a million dollars annually for the disposition of that sludge. But we're now bringing this in-house and we'll be managing it. So we approved the contract in the amount of eight hundred forty-four dollars to be utilized. So very excited because this brings it in-house and it's going to save us money in the long run. Next item that I heard was item number fourteen, forty-six. And fourteen, forty-six, this is a change order. And it was actually done as a piggyback for Public Works Sanitation and Beautification. And it is for us to provide safety shoes from a company called Safeguard Safety Shoes Company. We approved it in the amount of one hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. This particular item, you know, we feel particularly with some of our workers due to the cost that's associated with proper safety gear. We see this as one of our incentives. So happy to get that one out of committee. The next item that we heard was item number fourteen, fifty-one. And this was a low bid for ready-mixed concrete for roads and drainage. And this is used in the construction of everything from sidewalks to curves, our curbs, headwalls, driveways. We approved it in the amount of five hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars. Next item that we heard was item number fourteen, fifty. I'm sorry, fifteen, forty. And this was a low bid for Seminole Road landfill cell construction. And actually, on this item, we did table this. We will actually hear it today pending audit because of the cost. So next, we had item fifteen, thirty-one. This is a GDOT project for water sewer facilities at for a bridge replacement at Covington Highway, Red Wing Circle, and Glenwood Road. We approved it in the amount of two million, two thousand sixteen dollars. This item had been sitting for a while and had previously been approved, but the work was not started. In many instances, when there's work necessary, it makes more sense to time our construction work along with GDOT and it saves us money. We did approve this with a contingency because we needed a little bit more information. So was approved pending that one contingency. And our last item that we heard in committee was item number fifteen, eighty-eight. And this is an agreement for the construction and financing of sewer upgrades with Legacy Park South Housing Village. This is very similar to what we've done with PepsiCo. As we acquire additional water capacity, we are able to pass it on for projects. Because as many of you know, that watch us, we are under consent decree and in some instances, we may not have the capacity. So we approved two hundred thousand dollars and DeKalb is doing a match with this particular entity. And that sums up the six items that were heard in committee. So at this time, I will yield back to our Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochran Johnson. Much appreciated. Next, we'll hear the PEX Committee chaired by Commissioner Larry Johnson.
Thank you so much and good morning to everybody and glad to be part of our Committee of the Whole meeting. I'm looking for my little notes ahead. Okay, here we go. I'm back. We had a very good meeting and discussed a whole host of issues. We went through the donation for N H Dot Recreation Center with Atlanta Hawks, which would be an eighty-five thousand dollar investment that we'll be making. We also went further into discussions on repositioning our rec centers to fit more of the generational shift that has happened around video recording and adding that to our parks and recreation programming. We also talked about the ten-year plan for Parks and Cultural Affairs. A lot of the questions the Commissioner had got answered by Director Ellis and we approve that as coming forward to the board. The Sam Street Purchasing System process. We talked about that and Mr. Baker is going to come back in thirty days to give us an update on where we are with permitting and the process that we're working towards. Very good discussion. And he outlined, we've done more permits now than we've done in the past. And we're moving to a more technology base and they will be in person soon once they open up the Sam Street Office, the new space for planning and sustainability. And we talked about small box retail and that will be coming forward. We had a lot of discussion about what high-risk businesses are and the definition and the impact that it will have on communities. And so we'll get more information on that as we go forward and this will be extended another, I think, sixty days that may be coming forward for us, extended to July thirty-first. So, Mr. Presiding Officer, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Larry Johnson. Next, we'll hear the ERPS Committee report from Commissioner Ted Terry.
Thank you, Presiding Officer Patrick. Having a little bit of trouble hearing you. I'm not sure if the microphone is covered up or not, but just wanted to mention that. Can hear you just a little bit low. But thank you so much. The ERPS Committee met two weeks ago on May third. We spent most of our time discussing item number twelve ninety-nine, which is the Resolution Regarding Mandatory Use of Video Surveillance Systems at Convenience Stores, sponsored by Commissioner Cochran Johnson. We had Chief Ramos as well as County Attorney, Deputy County Attorney Terry Phillips, speak in regards to the importance of video surveillance, as well as the discussion about just the sort of the enforceability and the legalities associated with the ordinance. Everything appears to be in order. There's several smaller items that need to be addressed regarding, we discussed enforcement, identifying high-risk businesses and how they might get on the list versus sort of get off the high-risk business list. The, this is a very timely, I think, ordinance brought by Commissioner Cochran Johnson because we are seeing continued violence at convenience stores and the ability for our detectives and law enforcement to review videos, whether it's in real time, even before responding to an incident or after the fact to help solve the crime. These video surveillance systems and having the high-def version is very, very important. We know that there are, so we did discuss a little bit regarding lighting requirements and so there was an issue brought about spillover lighting and I think we've addressed that as well. But all good discussions that we had here. The, that we left it with a thirty-day deferral. And Attorney Phillips, Terry Phillips, will be speaking with Chief Ramos, whether it was last week or this week, to go over the details that might be needed to craft the substitute item. And so hopefully, they are making progress on that because we would like to act on it in the ERPS Committee once that thirty-day deferral is complete. So hopefully, in two weeks from now, we'll have the substitute finished and we can move forward with ensuring this important new safety regulation for the convenience stores in DeKalb County. So appreciations to Commissioner Cochran Johnson for doing all of the hard work for many, many months to get us to this point. I would say that this is not an emergency item, but it is something that we should get done as soon as possible because it will help address rising instances of violent crime at our community stores in DeKalb. The next item that we discussed was item thirteen seventy-seven. That's the Speed Zone and Radar Permit Application with GDOT. We did recommend approval for this list. However, the committee would like to request that the administration and Directors Lemke and Allen to, to give the Commissioners sort of a more formalized process and timeline to receive feedback for the roads and intersections and school zones that are currently on the list, as well as other locations that could be added in the future. We understand that this, these applications are lengthy and they do require a sort of advanced sort of timing. And so we're unable to make any changes to the application for this year. However, it was acknowledged that we could begin doing other testing, other radar testing studies in other areas, particularly around school zones, starting in the fall, school session that would inform us for next year's application. So we acknowledged that we were a little bit behind on getting the input from the Commissioners on that list. And unfortunately, we didn't want to delay that process any further. So we, you know, we, of course, moved to approve. And then I think moving forward, we just asked that, you know, Director Lemke and Allen, just give us a sense of a timeline as well as, you know, what's the best way to receive input from the Commissioners on roads and other school zones that need to be studied? So we can plan for those this fall and hopefully inform us for the application next year. We also heard item fourteen fifty-two and recommended approval. This was just a a proposal that is for a, for a media consultant with the Fire Department, Fire Rescue, to support training videos and potentially also for public information videos as well. And so we know that the Fire Rescue Team has a really strong community engagement and education department. And so this contract is going to help produce videos that will better communicate the messages for safety as well as recruitment and training of our cadets. And lastly, we approved item sixteen oh one. This was the, to appropriate one million dollars for the community-based programs to reduce violent crime. I believe that did pass last week and if I'm not mistaken, Director Scott from Human Services will be providing, I think, a webinar for any nonprofits that are interested in applying for or have ideas to address community-based programs to reduce violent crime. I think those webinars are happening this week. So just wanted to put a reminder out there that for us to get the word out, so any nonprofits that have interest in or have ideas or programs they're already implementing, that they are aware of the process for applying as well as getting the information to, you know, to apply in a timely manner. We did discuss a source of funding and I'm not sure if that got worked out between now or last ERPS and then last Board of Commission meeting. But we did discuss the difference between A R P funding as being the primary preferred source. And then just also acknowledging that, that there's, you know, there still is a delay coming from just the process for the MOAs and the approval process for nonprofits using A R P money. So we did want to, you know, just hopefully get some more clarity on how quickly some of these grants will be approved. I think we're looking at about four to five, maybe six months now for already sort of submitted A R P community-based projects. I know a lot of the Commissioners have put forward projects that are addressing community violence, that are addressing loss of learning, public health programs, education, after-school programs, job training programs. These are all, these are all programs from my reading that address the root causes of violence and poverty. And I think actually CEO Thurman mentioned it at his State of the County address. One of the best ways to fight crime is to give someone a job. And so the only concern that I think we brought up is, will it take four to five months for these nonprofits that are applying for this one million dollars to be approved? Because we are in a, I think, we continue to be in a crime wave. We're seeing stats go up for violent crime the most. And so this really is, I think, our moment to respond in a timely manner. And so I'm hoping that we can advance not just what the Commissioners have put forward because I think they do address community violence, but certainly the additional one million dollars that the CEO and the Commissioners approved to address this. So all good, I think, efforts and it's great that we're putting resources into these, these programs. And so let's just, you know, stay focused on getting them approved and the money out the door so it can be put to good use for the residents and the citizens of DeKalb. And with that, that was all of our agenda. So that completes my report. I'll turn it back over to you, Presiding Officer Patrick. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Terry, Commissioner Bradshaw. Is there anything you'd like to add to the conversation so far?
One quick thing, if I might, Mr. Presiding Officer, just to remind the citizens of DeKalb County, if you haven't taken advantage of the opportunity to vote early, please do so. I voted last week at the Memorial Drive location. All in, it took me maybe fifteen minutes and the process went very smoothly. So if you have an opportunity to do that while early voting is still open, please do so. And I yield back.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Bradshaw. Good words. Good timing for that. Next, we'll turn it over to Mr. Greenwood for the MARTA quarterly briefing. Mr. Greenwood, good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and good morning to all. I want to thank you for the opportunity for MARTA to join you today and talk a little bit about our, as promised, talk about our F Y twenty-three budget, both capital and operating. I wanted to start off by thanking our Chair Rita Scott and our DeKalb Board members, Jim Duratt, Bill Floyd, and Rod Farson for joining us online. You'll be hearing just a bit from me as I set this up and then I'll turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Raj Srina, and our Chief Capital and Expansion Officer, Mr. Manjeet Ranu. But before they start, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the fact that we're unfolding the F Y twenty-three budget on the heels of some good successes in terms of F Y twenty-two. So I just wanted to set the stage with that. We're closing out the F Y twenty-two budget with some notable successes. We are primed to build on those and, and other strengths as we tackle F Y twenty-three. While we acknowledge the effects of economic challenges and pandemic implications, supply chain and workforce deficits, we're still cautiously optimistic that we will soon see a stabilization in those, in those areas. In the meantime, MARTA continued to work and, and you, you saw just a few weeks ago, on April twenty-second, we had the the first launch of our zero emissions buses. We're not stopping there. We have a Tiger Grant in play for the Summer Hill Program, which will include six electric articulated buses. And by the end of May, we will be submitting our low-no grant application for up to forty-eight more electric buses over the course of the next five years, along with infrastructure and charging solutions to match vehicle specs for procurement. In fact, at MARTA, over the next ten years, are open to the concept of zero emission vehicles, electric, hydrogen, whatever technology brings our way, we are prepared to investigate those as we move forward. We also supported our MARTA workforce, which was very critical in the past years, as you well know. We had cost of living increases. We had hero pay increases. We had retention bonuses, lots of attention to recruitment and, and training as well as development and just plain old value for the people that have made MARTA successful. And that will continue in F Y twenty-three. You'll see more evidence of that. Station rehab that often early started in the areas of College Park and most notably at Indian Creek, where the landscaping, tile work, painting, and parking lot work got underway. The premise for our F Y twenty-three budget really is to, is to reassure everyone because it's important that we do it at this juncture. We just want to reassure all that MARTA will continue to embrace our and energize our four strategic priorities, right? So that's consistently providing excellence in customer service, delivering the capital program with speed and efficiency, strengthening the MARTA brand, and demonstrating fiscal responsibility. Our operating budget will continue the responsible return of service and you'll see emphasis on station cleanliness, police support, financial sustainability, judicial, judicious administration of our budgets and cost control measures. When it comes to the capital program, most of our increase is occurring here in twenty twenty-three, in F Y twenty-three. So the headcount additions, the restructuring to expedite the capital program and build competencies within our group to deliver on the commitments that we're making. Recruitment, training, professional coaching, we've heard the concerns about our capacity to deliver and we will not be repeating that trend. The capital program specifically targets the Fifteenth Amendment, advancing thirteen projects in F Y twenty-three. And, and I've been saying that, you know, the capital program is, it's a generational opportunity, but challenges do exist. We will capitalize on the availability of significant new federal funding, up to thirty-five percent more formula funds under the I I J A, which, which amounts to about forty million dollars to MARTA. We will also insist on better collaboration internally between our groups, such as the Grants Group, the Capital Programs Group, working together a lot more efficiently and also tackling structural and cultural changes within the authority to, to improve our ability to deliver. Project definition will improve with mature appreciation for those things I mentioned earlier, you know, the pandemic, the supply chain. Yes, sir.
Just a note from my Commissioners. Looks like we're still stuck on the first slide. Is that the intent?
That's, yeah, that's, that's my design.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. And if I could just interrupt you one more second longer, I note that Commissioner Johnson had his hand raised and I wasn't sure if he had an additional question beyond that.
No, that was it. I liked the speech, but I want to see the work. I want to see the presentation.
Yeah, well, if you'll indulge me, I will, I will turn it over to Raj in less than a minute and, and you'll see the, the numbers that follow. I'm just trying to set the stage for, for Raj. So anyway, the capital program is a generational opportunity. We will continue to improve project definition and, and finally, there are three categories that you'll see when we start talking about the capital program. State of Good Repair and Expansion, you're familiar with. The Policy Innovation and Administration, the P I A portion is new. And that's a nod to our efforts in building up the policy and planning side of our house to better serve the public. So with that, and without further ado, and by popular demand, I will, I will ask Raj Srina to start rolling through the slides on the budget numbers themselves. Raj?
Thank you, Colley, for that great background. Good morning, everyone. My name is Raj Srina and the Chief Financial Officer with MARTA. Let me start with the budget, fiscal year twenty-three budget timelines. We did brief our board this past Friday, May thirteenth. And we will be having public hearings. In fact, we had one last night. The second public hearing is in DeKalb County. That'll be this afternoon, around eleven-ish or so, correct? Followed by that, we are briefing all of the jurisdictions and this is the first jurisdictional briefing today. And we have three more scheduled later this week and early next week. Following which, we will be presenting the final budget, which would include any input feedback we get from either the jurisdictions and/or the public to the Business Management Committee on May twenty-sixth. And the final budget is set for board approval on June ninth. Next slide, please. Just want to, this is the highlight of the service we plan on introducing in fiscal year twenty-three. Just a little bit of a historical background. Fiscal year two thousand nineteen was the last full fiscal year we provided full service. That's, that was the pre-pandemic service. And fiscal year twenty-three, which is the last column on the slide you see, we plan on bringing the fixed route service back to the pre-pandemic levels. When I say fixed route, it is bus, light rail, and streetcar. Those are the three. If you see the number service hours, it's, it's pretty close to or on par with fiscal year nineteen. The only thing, mobility, which is a paratransit service, it, the service we plan on providing in twenty-three would be higher than what we have provided in twenty-two and twenty-one. However, it's a little bit lower than two thousand nineteen because that's a demand-based service. And from all the information we have, the demand hasn't picked up as much as, you know, the pre-pandemic level. So that's a little bit lower than two thousand nineteen, however, higher than twenty-one and twenty-two. Next slide, please. This is the four-year picture of revenue versus expenses. Fiscal year twenty and twenty-one are actual revenues and actually operating expenditures. And twenty-two is the budget revenue and expense. We still haven't closed twenty-two yet. And the twenty-three is the proposed fiscal year twenty-three operating budget. As you can see from the previous, just like the previous years, revenues exceed expenses. That's largely because of the cash infusion we got from three separate federal stimulus funds. The last one being the American Rescue Plan Fund, which we have drawn some this year and we expect to draw another about one hundred and forty million dollars in fiscal year twenty-three. That's the reason for the surplus. Next slide, please. The, this is, you know, where we get various sources of revenues to fund our operations. Uh, the, this is a, you you know, where we get various sources of revenues to fund our operations. Uh, the the biggest portion of the revenues come from sales tax, roughly about half, maybe a tad below fifty percent. And followed by, as I mentioned a few seconds ago, hundred and forty point four million dollars for the American Rescue Plan Funds, or the ARC Funds. And the third one, the seventy-three point five, is what's called the Federal Formula Funds, which we use for preventive maintenance, which is operating expense. However, the federal government treats that as capital. Uh, last but not the least, the passenger revenues are expected to be about sixty-seven million. Just to provide some context, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, our budget for passenger revenues was sixty million. And the way we are trending right now, we expect to close the year with on or about sixty, maybe a million or two, above sixty. So we are expecting somewhat conservatively about ten percent increase in passenger revenues going into fiscal year twenty-three. Next slide, please. And these are all the operating expenses. The biggest piece, about two-thirds of our expenses are in labor, wages, and associated benefits. That's about three hundred and forty-nine million. And the next biggest, uh, you know, uh, chunk of expenses in the contractual services, that's largely because of information technology or fare collection equipment, maintenance, those type of contracts. And the third big piece of uh, expense is the mobility contract, which is the paratransit, which is a contracted service, uh, we are projecting about forty point four million dollars of expenses on that. Fuel and propulsion. And I I don't think I need to tell anyone, you know, uh, diesel, as well as natural gas prices, have increased considerably over the last six months. In fact, our diesel budget for fiscal year twenty-two was two dollar twenty cents per gallon. And we have increased our budget by fifty percent now, which uh, were three hundred, three dollars forty cents per gallon going into fiscal year twenty-three. And likewise, on natural gas, our budget for twenty-two was four point three dollars per decathour. And we are again increasing the budget for fiscal year twenty-three by about fifty percent. It's about six point six zero for fiscal year twenty-three. That's per decathour of natural gas. Next slide, please. And to briefly talk about the capital budget, uh, Manjeet, if you could go to the next one. And these are the sources and uses for our capital funds. And you can see, let me just focus on the expenditure side first. Our total expenditures planned for fiscal year twenty-three are seven hundred and seventeen million dollars, as you can see from the bottom half of the slide. And about five hundred and twelve of those are intended for state of good repair uh, projects across the the system. Hundred and forty-five million dollars are budgeted for any debt service costs. These are bonds we have already issued in the past. There is no further debt issuance contemplated this year, this year meaning fiscal year twenty-three. And there is also uh, uh, some investments, planned investments in Moore-Motta City of Atlanta for forty-five point four million dollars, and Moore-Motta Clayton County of fourteen point five million dollars. So all of that add up to seven hundred and seventeen million dollars. And going back to the sources of funds, uh, we have had some carryover of funds of five hundred and ninety-nine. And that's just a little bit of an explanation on the two hundred and seventy-nine point four million dollars, which is a prior sales tax surplus. We step back a little bit. When we budgeted for fiscal year twenty-two, we had assumed spending our American Rescue Plan Funds of two hundred and eighty-five million dollars on capital project, predominantly on capital projects. After the budget was passed, we received guidance from Federal Transit Administration that we could not do that. Um, and so we had to use all of the monies from the American Rescue Plan for operations, which freed up our sales tax, which we'll be using for capital. In other words, the color of money has changed. However, the amounts that are being spent on operating and capital have not changed. Moving on to the next slide.
Mr. Srinath, if I could uh, just interrupt for one second. I noticed that Commissioners uh, Marina Davis-Johnson and Ted Tierney have their hands raised. Uh, do you mind if we take a quick question from each?
Sure.
Commissioner Davis-Johnson.
And you're on mute. If you could go, if you could go back to, okay, yeah, you say capital expenses. And I see Moore-Motta City of Atlanta, Moore-Motta, Moore-Motta Clayton County. Um, could you pretty much expand on that and what uh, that is for?
Uh, cer- certainly. Uh, the State of Good Repair Funds, our expenditures are funded by what we call the coal penny tax. Uh, that the Fulton County, DeKalb, and City of Atlanta, one penny tax. A few years ago, uh, I believe it was two thousand sixteen, I may be off by a year, Clayton County imposed a one penny tax that supports some of the operations in Clayton County, as well as some of the expansion projects in Clayton County. And the Moore-Motta Clayton County, that's what it's funded from. Likewise, likewise, the City of Atlanta imposed an additional half a penny tax, and any of the Moore-Motta City of Atlanta projects are funded by that.
Okay, and Clayton County? Hello, can you?
I I'm sorry, it was, I I I didn't hear you.
And I say in Clayton County, so so you say the uh, five hundred and twelve million dollars, where it says State of Good Repair.
That is correct. That's across the.
Okay, the forty-five point four million, where it says Moore-Motta City of Atlanta, is coming from the, their uh, half penny sales taxes, is that what you're saying?
Uh, that's correct.
And uh, Moore-Motta Clayton County, where fourteen point five million is coming from what?
Their one penny tax, which they introduced, uh, I I believe it was two thousand sixteen or seventeen.
Uh-huh, and so these, okay, 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 that's, you know, that's that's what I wanted uh, to know. And um, there's nothing in your capital expense related to uh, DeKalb County of the expansion, of the possible expansion of of rail in this county, is that correct? A study or, you know, any monies uh, considered or for uh, DeKalb County and that purposes, and those purposes?
There there are quite a few capital projects uh, planned for in fiscal year twenty-three in DeKalb County.
Okay.
To repair and expansion. Once I conclude my presentation, I'll be handing it over to Mr. Manjeet Ranu. He will go to those projects, which are specific to DeKalb County.
Okay, thank you so much.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis-Johnson, Commissioner Terry.
Thank you, um, Presiding Officer Patrick. Um, yeah, could you, could you just repeat again what you said about receiving the ARP money that went into operating, which means that there is, it sounded like there was more in the fund balance. Was it for operating or just for other line items? Could you just kind of clarify what you were saying there?
Sure, uh, MARTA received three separate uh, tranches or or funding infusion from three separate, you know, uh, bills passed by Congress. One was a CARES Act, about two hundred and ninety-five million dollars, two hundred and ninety-eight million dollars, actually. That was uh, two years ago. Followed by a smaller tranche of thirty-three and a half million dollars from the CHRISAA grants, which all of that went to, with the CARES Act, all of that went to operations. That's what we were um, expected to use those for, which freed up freed up some sales tax funds, also provide for, you know, compensating for the any loss of fair revenues. Second one, CHRISAA was a thirty-three and a half million dollars. All of that we plan on using for capital. And the last one, the two hundred and eighty-five million dollars of ARP funds, which is what I mentioned. Initially, we were planning on using that for capital. In fact, when we, twenty-two budget was approved, that that was the intent. But however, after the budget was approved, Federal Transit Administration came out with a guidance that those funds could not be used for capital expenditures, but has to be used for operations. So we changed that, which freed up sales tax, which we will be using for capital. That's what I meant by the color of money changed, but the amounts for each program did not.
Okay, so just, okay, thank you for that clarification. So does that mean that there is more funds being expended in the State of Good Repair line item this coming fiscal year?
Correct, yes, uh, uh, this is slightly higher than what we are planning and, or what we plan on spending in twenty-two, that is correct.
Okay, so I I assume the rest of the presentation is going to describe expanded uh, capital improvements for DeKalb County then?
Ye- yes, I mean, I'll, there are about maybe three more slides. I will go through uh, uh, the the the, you know, makeup of those revenues and expenses. Then I will turn it over to Manjeet. He will talk about projects specific to DeKalb County.
Okay, gotcha. And then just last quick question on this front. So um, the sales tax um, revenues, um, did they, did they go up?
Yes.
Did it go up this year as well?
Correct, uh, uh, the the answer is yes to both. Fiscal year twenty-two, we we saw an increase of roughly sixteen percent compared to fiscal year twenty-one. And it's expected to go up again in fiscal year twenty-three, uh, roughly about four and a half percent or so compared to twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sunraff.
Uh, tha- thank you, uh, uh, re- real quick, you know, the the, these are all the various funding sources. Uh, the the biggest, uh, you know, is from the sales tax, which is about two hundred and ninety point four. And also, the the next, the two hundred and forty-five, that's from the reserves we have built in. That's what we plan on using to fund our capital program for fi- fiscal year twenty-three, uh, or the State of Good Repair Capital Program for uh, fiscal year twenty-three. Followed by the federal grants, again, these are some of the both combination of discretionary, as well as the formula funds. And the CHRISAA fund, which I talked about, this is thirty-three and a half. We plan on expanding about seventeen in twenty-three and the balance the following year. And there are some small pieces of other grants in the surpluses which we are carrying over from previous year. Next slide. And this, this is where we plan on spending the twenty-three capital expenses on. Uh, the biggest uh, thing, uh, about twenty-nine percent of the expenditures are targeted towards improving stations and facilities and rehabbing them. And the next one, I'll I'll talk about the debt service in a second. On many of our systems, this includes our information technology, train control systems, and vehicles. This is our rail car procurement, as well as some of the bus, either major re- rehab or replacement of the bus and the mobility vehicles we have. And maintenance of way is another forty million dollars, so six percent of overall expenditures. And the debt service is about hundred and forty-five million. That's about twenty-two percent of our capital budget. This is debt service on the debt MARTA had issued in the past. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we do not plan on issuing any debt in fiscal year twenty-three. Next slide, please. These are the top ten projects, which we plan on uh, focusing on fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, and and I'm not not going to read every line item on that. Uh, and the top ten projects account for about fifty-nine percent of our capital program for fiscal year twenty-three. With the the rail station rehab being the, as the highest expenditure of about seventy-two million.
Thank you.
Mr. Mary Collins.
No.
Wa- was there a question? I'm sorry.
Uh, no, sir, just go ahead with the.
Yeah, I got a quick question on that one.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
So can you, can you just, I mean, is it, is it possible to just expound a little bit? So this is what is the capital, so um, based on the federal funds that have paid for operating, can you just speak to where, what line items you're increasing from what otherwise would have been the case if we had not received the federal funds for operating? Are there new items on here that didn't, that weren't planned, but now are being planned because of the um, hundred and forty million dollars?
M- 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 many of these were planned before, and it's across the uh, every one of those. And all all we have done is we have kind of, you know, advanced the state of good repair projects. So we were planning, if I go through the next slide, uh, ju- just to give you some context. Uh, before we got the, you know, on on this slide, for example, fiscal year twenty-three, we plan on spending five hundred and twelve million dollars in all of these five categories. These are the FTA-defined categories, vehicles, facilities, maintenance of way, systems, and non-assets. And last year's budget was uh, roughly about seventy to eighty million dollars lower than this. So that that's where we are going, and some portion of the ARP funds will all also be used for expansion projects.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next slide. I believe this, this is where I'll turn it over to Manjeet. Uh, he'll talk about the project highlights specific to DeKalb County.
Thank you, and good morning to DeKalb County Commissioners, Manjeet Ranu, Chief of Capital Programs, Expansion, and Innovation at MARTA. So I'll do a quick overview of some of the highlighted projects that are specific to to DeKalb County or directly benefit to DeKalb County. So under the category of Policy Innovation and Administration that Mr. Greenwood described earlier today, um, there are three initiatives that are benefiting to DeKalb County. Uh, two are Transgender Development Master Plans around rail stations in DeKalb County, one Kensington, the other Indian Creek. And this has to do with visioning what could be joint development, uh, mix of public and private partnership to advance um, beneficial uses like housing and commercial and employment around stations with unutilized land and with high-capacity transit service for those as well. So we've undertaken that for Kensington and Indian Creek. Next is the Safe Routes to Transit Initiative, as um, we have a lot of bus stops and even rail stations where it's a challenge to walk, bike, or roll to those stations safely or those bus stops. And so we've uh, done an initiative to identify some priority stops and stations where we can make improvements. But in many cases, we would need to partner with local jurisdictions to uh, leverage funds to make improvements as uh, MARTA's role is to ensure good access to our stops and stations. But, you know, we're not able to improve deficient infrastructure across the entire region. And there are benefits or potential funding sources from the um, Investment in Infrastructure and Jobs Act as well.
And I just have a quick question.
Commissioner Terry, go ahead.
Yeah, I noticed in the presentation, we have sort of a DeKalb sort of section. Are we going to go into more details on these items later on in the presentation?
If it pleases the Commission, we've, we have some additional slides where we can provide some more information.
Yes, thank you.
Onto the State of Good.
And I have, I have a question on this.
Commissioner Davis-Johnson.
Okay, and so for your um, twenty-twenty-three budget, uh, would these be all of the projects that you would be focused on, all of the capital projects in DeKalb County? Is that, is that, is that it?
So these are are highlighted significant capital projects that are into DeKalb County. We also do a lot of work system-wide that I'll touch on in a, in a couple of slides that benefit not only the DeKalb County, but all of the jurisdictions.
So 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 that would total for capital in your budget for twenty-three? If I'm wrong, and I may be reading it wrong, and let me know, uh, that would total about one point two-two-five million?
Um, if I may, Manjeet, maybe you want to specify that this is the Policy Innovation and Administration portion of our capital spending. There is State of Good Repair and Expansion as well.
Oh, okay, that's what I was asking.
Yes, and uh, there are a few more slides where you'll see additional projects that we're working on. And um, perhaps I'll get through those, and then we can pause and then dive deeper into certain projects if the the uh, Commission and Chair wish to do that. And um, perhaps I'll get through those, and then we can pause and then dive deeper into certain projects if the, the uh, Commission and Chair wish to do that.
Uh, Mr. Ranu, if you'll give us just one second, I see I've got Commissioner Larry Johnson followed by Commissioner Terry with the hand raised.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pause, cuz I have a lot of questions. I just need you to, I need to get to, I want to get through it before I can ask the question. So I just want you to hold me, Mr. Presiding Officer, if we're gonna let, if you're gonna get through them, so I can see what I need to ask. If not, I can stop and pause and ask, but I want to hear before I, cuz he may already answered my question, so.
All right, thank you.
But keep me in the loop when, when he ends this.
Commissioner Terry, can, is your question burning right now, or can we pause just a moment longer?
Yeah, I ju- I mean, there's so much information here, I, I think we need to just chime in, just so anyone watching can kind of follow along. Cuz if we come back to it, it might be hard to keep track of everything. But I think just on this slide in particular, it says, uh, budget is reflective of system-wide funding. So is the two million dollars for DeKalb, or is that for the entire system?
This is for the entire system, and when we identify priority, safe routes to transit, um, potential projects, then we would assign dollars uh, based on those projects that are identified.
Okay, and then understanding the, now, so is this, this is the, is this like the actual planning of the safe routes, not the actual infrastructure?
This, this will be primarily the, the study and planning and design of those, and then some initial capital construction dollars. This is a new initiative that MARTA has undertaken. So on the front end here, a lot of that work will be study and design work, but some um, initial capital dollars should be expected in fiscal year twenty three for quick action improvement projects.
Okay, and was this sec- was this line item increased um, because of the federal funds offsetting operating cost, or is this, is this line item didn't change?
This is new, so it's, it benefits from that.
Okay, so two million dollars in new planning and engineering for, I'm as, I'm assuming sidewalks to bus stops.
And traffic control devices, say, a hawk pedestrian signal to get safely across the roadway, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Terry. Mr. Ranu, please continue.
Thank you. So onto state of good repair projects, so they used to have some, um, some key projects for DeKalb County. Station rehabilitation, as we've talked about before, and celebrated ceremoniously the initiation of the Indian Creek Station Rehabilitation Program. We've done a lot of um, initial preparatory work and identified a budget that will take us to, into significant construction into a beginning of fiscal year twenty three. And um, about a two-year effort to fully rehabilitate the Indian Creek Station. Uh, next is the Brookhaven Station, um, which includes rehabilitating that one, um, with early work beginning on replacing the broken pavers that uh, need to be replaced on the station platform. And uh, we appreciate the congressionally-directed spending that is also helping to fund um, the pavement replacement program. Uh, smart restroom, which are um, a program that we have throughout all of our rail stations. Uh, Dorville will be a station that will receive a smart restroom. And next is the bus shelters and amenities, which the Commission's familiar with, is that each of these jurisdictional briefings, we touch on how that program is going to um, provide shelters and amenities for uh, bus stops. So that's the state of good repair program highlights for DeKalb County. Next are the expansion capital uh, projects for DeKalb County. So we have two mobility hubs, and one is at the Stonecrest, um, Stonecrest Mall area. We have identified a recommended site, and we're working through, um, speaking with stakeholders to um, get feedback on that recommended site for the Stonecrest Mobility Hub, with a budget of approximately fifteen million. The South DeKalb Mobility Hub, um, similar budget there, as well as we're advancing into uh, thirty percent design for that uh, mobility hub. And just to um, not assume anything, mobility hubs are really for buses. Um, a central point for buses to uh, pick up and, and drop off and transfer passengers, and has extra amenities that are for the benefit of customers, so they are, um, they are stations among, onto themselves. The Buford Highway Arterial Rapid Transit and Canler Road Arterial Rapid Transit corridors, uh, those studies are underway. And Arterial Rapid Transit is a high-impact, quick-delivery um, in type of bus transit to improve bus service in, in uh, high-ridership corridors with features such as bus stop shelters and real-time information and trans- transit signal priority with high-frequency service typically fifteen minutes um, or less. Um, next is the South DeKalb Transit Initiative, which involves studying and updating the locally-preferred alternative that was approved about a decade ago, um, in the South DeKalb area, centered roughly on the Interstate twenty freeway corridor, and um, studying heavy rail transit as part of that, additionally with other modes, including bus rapid transit. And, and next for expansion is the Interstate two-eighty-five top-end BRT study, which is multi-jurisdictional, and which I think you all are aware of the um, ceremonial signing that occurred last week at the Atlanta Regional Commission meeting. Um, so these are the, the key expansion projects for um, DeKalb County. And then on to the, the ten-year capital program, and these are, are highlights. We have a ruling ten-year capital budget as uh, just about all the projects that we do cross multiple fiscal years, uh, because they're significant projects for the Policy Innovation Administration. Safe Route to Transit will continue and grow. Um, state of good repair, more work on station rehabilitation, smart restrooms, and then system-wide is taking care of our, our assets such as traction power substations, the trapway themselves, maintaining our, our right-of-way communications and facilities. And for expansion, uh, continuing to move on the South DeKalb Transit Initiative, as well as the portion of the clipped and transit corridor that's within DeKalb County outside of the city of Atlanta. For the bus shelters and amenities, um, here's an example of a, a bus stop that became a bus shelter at Covington Highway and Redan Road. And for fiscal year twenty two, the status of amenities that have been installed, there are forty of them, three under construction, nine in permitting, and eighteen in design. In fiscal year twenty three, we expect to provide seventy more amenities in the form of shelters and benches in DeKalb County.
For us to the um, the capital projects slide.
Commissioner Terry, we're, we're almost, I think, towards the end. If, if we could just hold those questions, I, I believe Mr. Ranu has two or three slides left over, if I'm correct?
All right, I mean, I'm not gonna have less questions, so, I mean, it's just.
That's okay.
Answer now or later, but you're gonna have to go back to the slide, you're gonna have to go back.
Thank you very much. I'd appreciate you just, uh, holding your powder until we make it through the last few slides. Thank you.
Got like seven more slides, or actually like twenty.
So for the system-wide programs and projects, um, this highlights our fiscal year twenty three and, and ten-year capital program. For, and I, I won't read all of these here, but there's a significant amount of work being done, as we are the twelfth-largest transit agency in the country. Um, for policy innovation administration, uh, really focusing on comprehensive and guided and strategic thinking to begin a long-range transit plan. Um, looking at modernizing how we guide and, and provide for safe transportation on our rail program with communications-based train control, studying that. Um, and improving how we communicate and report the work that we're doing in the capital program. For state of good repair, uh, continuing to work on replacing tracks as needed. And um, our rail vehicles replacement is a, a major one, as we completely update our fleet over the next couple of years. And uh, a lot of things that you see in the background, um, that aren't necessarily visible to the public, but are vital to making sure we have safe and reliable service. And for expansion, under that category, transit signal priority and um, continuing to modernize our bus system with, with modern signage that you can see and understand what routes are served there, and improving upon our, our bus stop shelters, as buses are equally important as rail. But that concludes the regular presentation. We'll now return back to the Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ranu. Um, I know Commissioner Terry has questions, but I also know Commissioner Johnson has held his questions. So Commissioner Johnson, we'll hear your questions first, followed by Commissioner Terry, and any other Commissioners that, uh, raise their hand after that.
Thank you. Mr. Presiding Officer, uh, my question is for the Director and the person who just did the last report. And I don't know what slide it was that you did, but you talked about a surplus. You were able to use ARPA funds, you couldn't use them for capital, but you were able to use it for operations. And you have a surplus of two hundred and seventy-nine point four million dollars, and we have a total carryover of three hundred and thirty-eight million dollars. Uh, my first, that's what I want to make that statement right quick, but I'm gonna start backwards. You have a, a study on the top end of a two, I two-eighty-five and BRT that you're proposing. And I've been trying to get this done at the state level, in terms of doing something for Central and South for BRT along two-eighty-five. Why don't we just do the whole circle instead of doing half the circle? When you have a chance to get it all, cuz the southern and central part, our job center goes towards, may go towards Hartsfield, which is about forty thousand jobs in logistics market over there, trucking and logistics off Marlin and two-eighty-five, we get the largest movie studio in North America. Why don't you include that in the study? Because then you can show people how BRT can actually work, uh, while we propose in the heavy rail on I twenty. Is that possible to include the southern and s- 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 central and southern end in this BRT study?
I'll, I'll start, then I'll, I'll kick it back to, to Manjeet, but um, y- yes, there've been conversations clearly in the past about the south end as well as the north end. Um, uh, from, from what I understand, it's just, it's about being able to mobilize and find. On the south side, we, you know, all the conversations that we've had with a- about the north end have included provisions for the south side, so you know, you will, in fact, you will find um, by next week this time, an email going out to the south side representatives to talk about conversations so far and, and seeking their, their appetite to uh, to jump in this time. It's not, it's not, it's not that it's not going to happen on the south side, it's about when.
Yeah, let me ask you, cuz you're talking about matching funds, and that what it goes back to me, the surplus money. We, you don't need matching money if I got a surplus. So you already have money that you should be using to help fund this study for Central and South. We don't have to have a conversation, you just need to engage the leaders on the Central and South. And you got advisory boards we've used before, you got citizens already engaged. But we don't have to have a, a talk on something that we know that is needed. Trying to deal with, you know, emissions and greenhouse gases, asthma. That needs to be part of the conversation without talking about matching funds, because you got almost two hundred and seventy-nine million dollar surplus. So we don't need to focus on matching, when you got money that you can put towards this study to do it. So I, that's my, that's my point on that. The other part is um, the, the South DeKalb hub that you're proposing. Now, we've been waiting on this for two years, we found the place, you got the land. Why is it still five million dollars when we already told the people it's gonna cost fifteen? And you're planning to use ten million two years later? We should be breaking ground, uh, building this transit system, it's like we kicking it down, down the curb, and you know prices are going up. You got the land, I gave you two opportunities, two places where you can put it already. So why are we not moving forward, breaking ground on the South DeKalb Transit Hub right now? We, it's like you, we don't need to study it anymore, we already did the plans, we've engaged the community, we gave you two options. Why that's not moving forward?
All right, so let me, let me start with the South DeKalb, and then Manjeet, I'll ask you to jump in. So we do know that we, you know, we are advancing the thirty percent design, so there is traction on that project. Uh, the, the, the scheduled completion is somewhere at the, the end of twenty twenty-three for the South DeKalb Mobility Hub. So in terms of a finished product, we have a timeline, we have a goal, but we do have a process that we have to follow. I suspect, Manjeet, you can fill more in on that, but um.
You, do you have the land? Yes or no?
Do you want, go ahead, Manjeet, and speak to that.
That's the only way you're gonna build it. If you, you don't have the land, we don't have to have a discussion. Because we gave you two years to get the land, and that was the biggest obstacle.
So there were, there were site assessments to be completed, and so those initial site assessments have been completed, uh, have been performed. Um, I will, I will ask Manjeet to update if there's more on that, on that topic.
Yes, so um, Commissioner, so we are still working through the real estate process there, and um, we are making good progress for the design of the project, and we, we hear the Commission that this is a high priority. And um, when we can share more information about the real estate acquisition process, we will do that.
Let the people know how long it's, it's been. Has it been two years?
Um, that sounds about right, Commissioner.
So I need to make sure we move on that, because uh, you know, this is gonna help us when you try to get heavy rail and get this study done. Now you mentioned in your innovation process, you mentioned Kensington and another study. Now, I thought Kensington was funded already in last year's fiscal budget. Why is it still being funded with this one? The Kensington Study, Transit Order and Development. We've talked to those folks, I think, three or four months ago, on what they're planning and what they were doing. So why is that still part of this budget, should have been paid for in the last year's budget?
Generally, these projects are complex, and so they occur over multiple fiscal years. And so we adopt a budget each year, and each year that we're expending on the project, it reflects in the budget.
Okay, other question is debt service. I saw twenty-two percent of the money is a hundred and forty-five million dollars is going towards debt service. I want you to give me, uh, how long DeKalb County, since we've been paying for fifty years, how much debt we have contributed, paid for in debt service? You don't have to give it to me at this meeting, because I want people to know that we are not only contributing to good repair, capital improvements. We're paying for, uh, uh, on the debt of a system, and we're still trying to get rail, heavy rail now, I twenty. But I want to, I want to find out how much we paid in debt over the last fifty years, because we keep adding debt. And you keep telling us about state of good repair and capital improvements. But we, we're doing more than just paying for that, we're paying for this debt as well. Last question is about the um, let me see, the transit mobility, you had something in there, I wish you can pull that slide up, the transit mobility slide and hub. You had, can you pull that slide back up right quick?
And you will need to rescr- reshare your screen, sir.
The other part is, while you're pulling that slide up, how much funding will you get this year for ARPA? Because then you'll have more money to use, you can't use it towards capital, but you can use it towards operations, so you'll have another surplus coming up in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three. Yeah, this slide right here. Now, the Canler Road ART, now tell me about the ARPA funds, how much ARPA funds would you be getting this year?
Commissioner John, and the, the, this is Raj, I, I can answer both your questions. Uh, on, on the ARPA fund, we expect to draw down about hundred and forty million dollars in fiscal year twenty-three.
Right, so that's another, and then you'll be able to use that towards operations, so you'll have another surplus coming up. I just want to keep adding up funding that we could be using towards more projects uh, in um, the area. So what is Canler Road ART, what does ART mean?
It's Arterial Rapid Transit.
What does that mean? Where's it going?
That is part of what we're studying, um, is to identify the exact alignment and stops for Arterial Rapid Transit. And that is the high-impact um, quick improvement for bus service. But it has to do with better stops, transit signal priority, and high-frequency service.
So that, will that tie into the South DeKalb mobi- mobility hub?
And we'll determine that as part of the study.
I hope, yeah, uh, it has to be part of the study, cuz you own Canler Road, and that's where the mobility hub would have to be. So can you make sure you provide a map to the Commissioners on the Canler Road? ART, or will you bring a study, will you be bringing the consultants back to update us and when?
Yes, we can provide a map to the Commission that shows the study area.
All right, so I'll end with this, um, DeKalb has um, been faithful for a long time in funding and investing in MARTA. And so with these. And so with these surpluses and these additional funds. I wouldn't just rely on if you have more bus shelters that you can do in the next coming year. And the next coming year after that, I would add more to those to try to get as much investment in, in our area that you can. Instead of trying to stack up a, a large surplus in the rainy day come. And then you paying for everything and then all of a sudden you gotta come back to us and ask us for more money. And we didn't get, we didn't use this surplus to be more investment. So I hope we do more bus shelters, amenities. Um, get this mobility hub up and running this year or just break ground this year. Uh, add Central and South DeKalb to the, the B R T study because you might as well make it a circular bus system. And get us the uh, South DeKalb Transit Initiative. Do you know when you're gonna kick that off? Because I want residents to be a part of that. The rail, this is dealing with our alternative, our heavy rail, right?
Um, I'm sorry, Commissioner, were you asking about the two eighty five?
South DeKalb, the South DeKalb Transit Initiative. We are, we are now in May. And June is here. We're halfway through the year. And you're saying the South DeKalb Transit Initiative, when will that start?
We have started the work on that. Um, in particular, we've expedited the technical work and understanding what an alignment and cost would be. For heavy rail transit in addition to the other modes that we're looking at. And so this summer, we would expect to um, begin stakeholder and public outreach on that in coordination with um. DeKalb County, our key partner on this project.
Okay, cause I got, I wanna do something with some, I got some South DeKalb folks who wanna be part of the rail advocacy. And I want them to be in the loop so they can be organized, to be an advocate and a stakeholder. So the sooner you know, the better when we can send it to a commissioner so we can share this information so. We can be at the table, so we won't be on the menu. So thank you so much, Mr. Presiding Officer, for letting me ask those questions. And Marty, any question that I have, if you can just follow up uh, with a written response to all my questions. So I can have them, so I won't have to repeat it. And so I can, I wanna judge you on the timeline and outcomes. Based on what you stated today. So you can have it and I wanna thank the leadership you have, Ms. Scott. Uh, who was leading it and I respect her. I think she's doing a great job with all of our leaders that's part of it. But we wanna help them uh, as much as we can to push the envelope that, that we don't leave out. Pockets of the cab because transportation will increase economic development. And will also help us with our health indicators as well. Thank you so much.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Next is Commissioner Ted Tare.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Um. We've got ten more slides in the presentation deck and they're, these last ten slides are about the cab. So are we gonna go through those or no?
Those slides were, were there to assist with questions. Should the questions um. Land on any of those topics, they would help us illustrate. Um, we, we, we brought forward the pertinent information. But if questions kind of go around the corner, we're happy to entertain them with those slides.
Yeah, we'll go to slide thirty two, please. And this is um, following up with what Commissioner Johnson was, I think, pointing out.
Well, I didn't see these.
Because this slide thirty two, the South DeKalb Trans Initiative. Um, this seems like kind of breaking news because when we talked about this last fall. The purpose of this was to complete this, this year. But now it's saying it'll be done by late twenty twenty three. And I just, I don't understand how we've gone from. It seems like an almost eighteen month delay on completing this study.
So um, almost a year ago, we'd sent a, a letter to Congressman Johnson and then. To the, copy to the DeKalb County uh, Commission. That identified a twelve to eighteen month study to undertake this effort. So we're tracking consistent with that.
Okay, I, I'll have to go back and look at my notes, cause I'm pretty sure that. It was supposed to be done by late twenty twenty two. So maybe there was a miscommunication about, maybe that was the, when the contractor would be. I mean, are we gonna select, are y'all selecting the? Firm to do the study by the end of twenty twenty two and then it'll take them a year to do the studying? There's not very much information right here, so I don't know what the timeline is.
So the consultant has been selected and indeed is, is doing the work. Um, so yes, that timeline reflected from when we issued the notice to proceed and um, and undertaking the work. And we are, as I said earlier, um, expedited the, the study of the heavy rail. Option to understand alignment and cost and impacts as well.
Okay, um, can you go to slide twenty nine?
And if you could help me, just tell me which one, cause I don't see the number.
The mobility, mobility hub?
Thank you.
Yeah. So I, I understand there's issues with the Stonecrest site, but um, for South DeKalb, um. I guess my main concern with this is that. We have a new owner of the South DeKalb Mall. I'm not sure if y'all have been in contact with them. They've basically said they're gonna keep the mall. As a mall. There's no plans to do mixed use, any sort of redevelopment. Uh, they, the company that bought it literally just buys sort of dying malls and then just kind of just makes them into malls again. So my concern here is that, you know, this is sort of away from the mall. It's sort of on the corner site. And when we originally had talked about the transit hub in sort of like the initial kind of planning concepts, there was this. Thought about, you know, adding more sort of. You know, with mixed use elements to it. Um, but it, it's, it really seems like it's just basically a. You know, a bus shelter and some, you know, pull offs. So I'm, you know, I guess I'm curious about what Commissioner Johnson pointed out is, you know, what? What is the delay on the South DeKalb site? And then knowing now that the mall is not really in play for any sort of major redevelopment is gonna, seems like it's gonna be continued to be sort of a surface parking lot mall. This really seems like an opportunity for this transit hub to reflect. I think more innovative and forward-thinking transit hub designs that incorporate more of. The, the hubs into the commercial um, sort of activity centers. Um, this really. Seems like it's just pushed everything to the side. And, and I remember one of the presentations, I don't know if it was on here, or maybe it was on a PWI committee, but. You know, we were shown transit hubs that were literally stopping like in the mall uh, up in Minneapolis or like right on site. And so I'm, I'm still concerned that, you know, we're, we're going in this direction. But it doesn't really seem to change any of sort of the core aspects of how we need to reengage and reactivate. What is a dying mall. Um, uh, South DeKalb Mall, hopefully we'll get some new retailers in there, but it's a, you know, it's gonna be a tough order. Um, and then I think maybe just another, just to kind of pile on to what Commissioner Johnson was saying, I, I think, you know, it would. I, I didn't see anywhere still in the presentation where. You're showing increased capital expenditures because of the federal. You know, uh, offsets on operating expenses. So I'm not seeing where there's more investments in DeKalb. Uh, understanding that there's more money in the capital expenditure budget. So I, I just didn't see where that's being denoted and I would just. Ask for a, you know, an equitable distribution. Uh, it's great that Clayton and Atlanta have invested their sales tax money and I'm sure there's things they got. You know, on, you know, in the pipeline. Um, but you know, I'd like to ask our DeKalb. Uh, Marta board members to, you know, push for more investments on the DeKalb sites. Um, understanding that we do have additional funds for um, capital. Uh, projects. And so I'm hoping that we can get just a little bit more detail about where that actually is going. Uh, I'm not, you know, it seems like a great opportunity to put more money into these transit hubs. I mean, you know, fifteen million dollars really doesn't seem like a lot. Um, and if there's more money for capital expenditures and these two transit hubs have been identified as a top priority for the commission. Um, let's, you know, let's put more investment into it. Um, these are really important investments. For South DeKalb Transit and I don't wanna see us shortchanged. Especially now that we've got more money to work with. Um, I'm just not seeing the increased investment. I'm just seeing the same paradigm moving forward. I'll pause there.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Terry. Uh, next we'll hear from Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Alright, well, I didn't, can he respond to what I said and asked?
Thank you. Thank you. And, and, and I'll be, um, you know, I'd be brief because I think that.
Davis Johnson, if you could be one second. Uh, Mr. Greenwood, if you would have an opportunity to respond.
Thank you, um, President Officer. So, so to Mr. Terry, thank you for your comments. Um, you know, I will note that the, the investments noted to date are still. Being formed. So as we continue with the environmental assessments, as we continue with the design and the planning. Uh, you know, the, the amount of money required to actually bring these projects to fruition. May, may change. Uh, the design itself may change. I think what Mr. Renney was, was making clear to us is that. You know, especially in the case of a thirty percent design, there's, there's still a lot of assessment and a lot of design development to, to come. Um, we are, we are. We are committed to bringing, you know, the best possible design that meets the needs of the people and meets the modal service to the extent possible. Um, we will obviously keep you posted. Your comments are well taken, that we're not, we're not trying to get away with, um, you know, under spending. Uh, and the fact that a lot of these projects, you know, we, we will exceed um, the, the design phase in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. I think we'll see, we'll get more traction as you see shovels and dirt um, as the FY twenty three um, comes along.
Okay, um, and then on the Transit Oriented Develop Master Planning, um, Commissioner Johnson referenced it, but. Um, in the slide number twenty five, it says that the master plan for Kensington Station is underway. And expected to be to complete in summer of twenty twenty two. Um, I'll be honest, I haven't had any meeting with any master planner about Kensington TOD this year. So I'm not sure if there's meetings that are happening that I'm not aware of. I mean, Kensington and Indian Creek, even though. It's sort of the convergence of a lot of different districts and, you know, we have sort of lines that, you know, I've got Kensington, Lorraine's got Indian Creek. But we got like five commissioners that all intersect almost in that area. And, you know, it's just, those are two really important economic development opportunities. And, you know, and it says here, rezoning and TOD RFP will follow completion of master plan. I assume you're gonna be asking us for the rezone. Um, and so we just, we gotta be engaged in the master planning, cause. If y'all send us something that we weren't involved in and we didn't help co-create, we're just, we're gonna be looking at it like. You know, what, where's the other, where's the input here? So what's the plan? I don't, how, how are they gonna complete it by the summer?
Commissioner, I, I just jumped in real quick. I absolutely right and it is a typo that should say twenty three.
Oh, it's, it's a whole nother year? I thought we started this like a year ago. What, did y'all switch planners or something?
Um, I'm not familiar with that aspect of it, but it, it is moving forward and um. Targeting twenty twenty three to do the master planning effort.
Alright, that seems a lot, a lot longer than what was originally, originally advertised.
So again, I mean, I will say this. I, I mentioned earlier in the opening that there, as we get into some of these projects, the timelines will be reshaped by what we find. And um, and Marty's more about making sure we get it done right than just getting it done and leaving it with something that's. That's knowingly unacceptable. Um, we, we will take, we will take full responsibility for any timeline delays there. We talked about. Some of these, that, that do cause delay, we'll, we'll earn and own all of that. But um, but our commitment to you is that when it is done, it's something that you can be proud of and you can point to. And if, if it takes a year longer than we expected, you know, we'll, we will own that. I also wanted, I also wanted Raj Srinath, if, if you'll indulge me to, just to make a couple of comments on the surplus and debt issue so that. Be, because that, that came up with Mr. Johnson and Mr. Terry. I just wanna make sure Raj gets a chance to close that off. Um, before we go on to um, Ms. Davis Johnson, if you don't mind.
Yes, if, if I may, yeah. Thank you for that call, Lee. Uh, I, I, I know there was a lot of uh, comments or discussions on the surplus and debt. We're not building up the surplus and surplus as a, you know, there are a couple of reasons predominantly from the R funds which we had to use for operations. All of the surplus funds we have will be spent over the next two years, twenty three and twenty four. So we're not saving anything. That's one. And, and the second, or the second point I wanna make is, but for the surplus. In fiscal year twenty two, we were planning on issuing some bonds, which we are not now. Nor are we planning on issuing any bonds in twenty three, because we have more than enough funds to uh, pay for the project that are planned in twenty two as well as in twenty three. Yes, twenty four, we are contemplating issuing some bonds that helped us save on the debt service cost, which will go towards funding more projects. If not this year, definitely over the course of next couple of years. So that's a point I wanted to make. I think it was Commissioner Johnson who asked me, or who posed a question about. How much has DeKalb County paid, paid for debt service? It, it's from the unified, I mean, combined sales tax receipts, all of the sales tax is pledged for our bonds repayment. So it'll be very difficult to break it down. I mean, it, it goes through a mechanism called the trustee intercept. All of the monies we get from the Department of Revenue, from the State Department of Revenue, goes to the bond trustee. The bond trustee takes the debt service off the top and pays Marty the remaining funds available. So it'd be difficult to break it down by uh, county or by city of Atlanta. So I just wanted to note that.
Mr. President Officer, I've got point of order.
Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Raj. I just wanna say, see, if you're gonna spend the money in the next two years, you all should have brought the proposals. To us on what you're gonna spend in DeKalb. On top of what Commissioner Terry talked about. You shouldn't, you, you act like you operating in a normal fashion. When you had this money, you should say, okay, we're gonna do more than just. The, the bus shelters we promised in twenty two. We're gonna go above that. We're gonna do thirty five. Now we're doing seventy. And the other part is, just get somebody from Georgia Tech. And get him an internship and I guarantee they'll figure it out on this bond and on how much we're paying. So it's not impossible. You just hire somebody that can go out there and do it and get some, I mean, I guarantee MIT or Georgia Tech, somebody can tell us. What we paid over the last fifty years. And if you tell taxpayers in DeKalb that our money going towards the debt, we not, a lot of people gonna wanna take their penny back. Because you saying we paying our money to go towards the debt. And, you know, it's other stuff we're paying our money towards. So I just, I just want some clarity, cause it seemed like twenty two percent is a lot. And with all the things that we're asking and see, we built this system, DeKalb and Fulton built this system. And we've been faithful and a little, I don't get churchy on us, but it's time to bless us with much. And so, this is the time with these surpluses to go extraordinary. Out of the box and I think we in the normal budgetary cycle. So thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Terry, before you, I acknowledge you again. I wanna get the other commissioners ahead of you. Uh, Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Okay, and thank you. I'm, I'm not going to be long. I just wanted to echo um. Many other things that um, Commissioner Larry Johnson stated. And um, you know, um, I think, Mr. Greenwood, we do know that uh, you are new and you're. You know, you're here. We appreciate um, what you're doing. We also appreciate you listening. Uh, to our concerns, but um, South DeKalb in particularly, in particular. Uh, for many years have been kicked. The cab has been kicked down the road. Uh, you know, for environmental uh, reasons. For uh, traffic reasons, for economic reasons. We do need to move forward and um, uh, on the uh. Uh, transit on the uh, the um, heavy rail. To South DeKalb. We don't need to kick that uh, down the road uh, any longer. And I think that the people, if they can be engaged, they want to be engaged. Uh, whatever monies that Marty can give us, whatever monies that we can get through a tax. Uh, for, for that purpose, whatever monies we can get from the federal government and whatever other sources. You know, we just need to make sure that everything, all the prerequisites. Are being done right now. So that we are not left behind. And, and that is uh, my main concern. And, and that is my main concern. Because as I stated, as I go to South DeKalb and as Commissioner, as Commissioner Johnson stated about the the studio off of Boulder Crest, we have one off of South Indian Creek. There's economic development going all down I-20. And as, you know, I, one, I said this, I think, last week that as I move down I-20 now at one o'clock, or one forty-five on a weekday, is stop and go, stop and go. So as people move into the South DeKalb area, the south end of DeKalb, you know, we need transportation for all of those purposes. And so I'm just saying that, you know, I like the fact that money is sitting, uh, being set aside for the study. I have, I'm very confident in DeKalb's representatives on the MARTA board to, to do not only what's in vast interest of the county as a whole, but to be equitable throughout the county. And also look at us in south, central, south and southeast DeKalb because we do need your assistance. So I just wanted to say that I think that we're starting a good faith effort, Mr. Greenwood. I'd like to see us continue that because the last thing that we need, and like Commissioner Johnson stated, we halfway through this year. And the last thing that we need is to get to the end and be told that things that we needed to do to get to point A or B was not done. And that's the reason we need, we need continuous community involvement to make sure that the community is vested. And what we're trying to do also need commissioners' updates because as Commissioner Terry stated, you know, we need to know what's happening so that we're not left behind. So thank you for, for what you're doing. I know that this is something that you just became had this huge organization, but we know you can do it. We know that I, we know that our representatives are looking out for our interest. So appreciate what you're doing and look forward to continue to get updates and continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Davis Johnson, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson. Next we'll hear from Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say to Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Rainu and Mr. Sareth that, you know, what you're presenting is consistent with what I've seen since I joined the Board of Commissioners. In twenty nineteen, when the opportunity came before us as a body to vote on the Fifteenth Amendment, we made some decisions during that time. You were very clear in indicating that with the current penny that we've invested since I believe nineteen seventy-one, that DeKalb County was entitled to two things. That was the state of administration and the cost of good repair. And that we would owe that into perpetuity for what we currently have. And it would not facilitate rail expansion from that penny. You were very clear on that. When we negotiated the Fifteenth Amendment, what we were to receive were the two master transit hubs as well as upgrades and amenities that you presented here today, as well as certain station rehabilitation as well as art. And when we look at Clayton and their negotiation, they negotiated that a certain percent of their penny would be set aside specifically for the outgrowth of their projects. That's something that we did not do. When we honestly, in my opinion, had the opportunity to do so, we didn't do that. So now when we sit here and we look and, you know, no pun intended, the train is off the track, so to speak. Because the deliverables that were agreed to even during that time, you know, whether it be COVID-related, you know, there's some things I can say as it relates to the Kandler development of the master hub that even from just general conversations, you know, I was already aware that we were far off track. Because during the negotiation of the sale of that facility, there had been no critical conversations had between MARTA and at that time, the purchasers. So I remember standing there as I did an economic development tour, listening to representatives from MARTA speak and remaining silent, knowing that much of what they said was the result of lack of necessary conversations if we were to move forward with a man's master transit hub from that location. So when we talk about expectations from you, absent of an agreement, you all are giving us what we have signed up for.
No, uh-uh, no.
That's exactly what I see here. So feel free, anyone that has a difference of opinion as it relates to the contractual obligations that you've presented us. This is where we are. And as we look at expanding and creating mass transit, it's, it's a shame that we've invested as long as we have and we are here. But we do not have an agreement that requires MARTA to do any more than what they've done at this point. Now, in terms of being a valued partner, that's a completely different conversation as to what the future looks like. But what you are giving us, and I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Greenwood, is in line with what the current agreement would require. And with that said, I will ask you to respond to my statements.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochran Johnson. I, I, I cannot disagree with what you said. I, I agree to, to the best of my knowledge that MARTA is and we, we would have to be delivering on the commitments made. Additional expansion requires additional funds. I wanted to make the point earlier that we, you know, we can't match federal funds with federal funds, additional monies are required. But, you know, closer to your point is, is the fact that we have every intention of being good partners with the cab moving forward and finding ways to be creative and, and generate, help generate funds required to meet the expectations. But no, you, what you, what you have said is quite correct. And, and I will, I will defer to, to Raj Srinath if, if there are any technical corrections to be made to that.
I, I, I think you summed it up pretty well. Nothing more to add to that.
All right. If that's all on that point, I'd like to turn it back over to Commissioner Ted Terry.
Thank you. And I do appreciate all of the members of the MARTA team and board members for spending, you know, over an hour with us this morning. We only get to talk to y'all every quarter, so, you know, it's kind of like a check-in, but, you know, like, when we have our check-ins and people say we're gonna do things or this is gonna happen, we go out and tell our constituents, these things are happening. And then we come back and it says, well, it's actually not happening when we said it was gonna happen. It's gonna happen much later. And thi- this is, this is like, I think, one of the fundamental issues that we're in right now in DeKalb because we have delayed our own transit funding for another two years. Because I think that there is a lot of people, and I'm thinking about my constituents, I represent Southwest DeKalb, who are asking that question of where's our transit hub? And I, and I agree with Commissioner Cochran Johnson. I think, I mean, MARTA is doing everything that's laid out in the contracts. But it's just, it seemed like it might be taking longer than was anticipated, so I understand those things happen. But that's, that hurts us because we have to go out and tell our constituents, it's coming, just wait. And, and I think, you know, in particular, and there's some other slides in here we didn't get to, because, you know, we didn't talk about the the, shoot, the, what is it called? The, the bus network redesign. I mean, this is a huge decision that I think we're all gonna have to make here. I assume it's gonna be, we're gonna be making this decision in the matter of months. But the budget line item that talked about safe routes to transit is only two million dollars across the entire system. Well, if we're going to folks who have been relying on more convenient bus access into their neighborhoods, and if we switch over to a more capacity-driven model, but there's no sidewalks to those higher-capacity routes, then people are really gonna feel like they're getting short-changed and not have any options. I will acknowledge that on the news this morning I was driving in, that the MARTA REACH program, I think, apparently appeals to be, be very successful, and I think I heard it was being expanded. I didn't hear if it was being expanded in DeKalb, but I know we're doing a pilot on the, in the Glenwood Memorial Drive area, Belvedere Park neighborhood. So, you know, those are tactics, I think, that, you know, are really positive because if we're talking about network bus redesign, but we're not also following up with in- investments in this, whether it's MARTA REACH or more safe routes to those transit, then we'll be doing things and then having this gap in between actually implementation and connectivity. So I think we, we need to show that those investments are forthcoming and that we're advancing them quickly in line with what I think is, what seems to be, there're gonna be some changes to the bus routes. I am a little bit concerned on the I-285 Top End BRT study. It says memorandum of understanding was signed with partners last week, MARTA, G.DOT, ARC, ATL, Cobb and Gwinnett County. And I guess the only, the, the question there is, is DeKalb County not part of that partnership? I know it's on our transit plan, but I think we've acknowledged that we wanna update our transit plan. So, you know, it's going through DeKalb all the way to Memorial Drive and I guess the Indian Creek Station is what the, the BRT study is. So how do we engage in that? It's going through our districts, but we're not, I don't think we're part of that MOU. So I'm a little concerned about that. The, and then, you know, just, I gotta dwell a little bit on the transit hubs because, you know, I think it was fifteen million, I think that was, was put there for the two transit hubs. And just hearing that there's extra money going into capital programs, it just seems that this would be a good faith opportunity to show that we're investing in transit in South DeKalb. And these two transit hubs, I think, have the potential to be so much more than they're currently planning to be. And I think that the reason why is because there's lack of funding. If you only have fifteen million, you can only do, you know, sort of a little bus bay and a nice little, you know, landscaped seating area. What, what could you do with thirty million? Could probably do a lot more. And so I see it's, you know, South DeKalb says there's thirty percent of the design is done, so, you know, I just, I, I'm just, I think that we should put more into those transit hubs. And I, I know that wasn't part of the Fifteenth Amendment. Or maybe that, maybe the, I don't know if the budgeting was part of that, but I know that doing the transit hubs was part of it. But this would just be a really good example of showing that we're investing in transit in South DeKalb and not just getting Stonecrest in South DeKalb, but basically appears to be just a bus bay. It's not really a transit hub. It's just a bus depot where some stops, you know, converge. I've seen so many, I mean, when y'all came to us a year ago talking about transit hubs, I mean, there were, I mean, it was, they were beautiful designs. There were public parks. There was, you know, commerce. There was, you know, it was, it was, one was going into the, the actual mall site. Just there was more integration. There was more place-making involved. And, and I, and I, and that, that, and that kind of brings me to my final point, is I didn't see any mention on here of soccer in the streets and station soccer. I think that, to me, is one of the most powerful programs that MARTA could be doing right now. Because what station soccer is doing is place-making at MARTA stations. Understanding that the, the master planning for Kensington and Indian Creek is now not gonna be done for another year and a half, which I assume means nothing's gonna be developed for even years further. We need to get some early wins. And station soccer is a hallmark place-making, activating spaces for the community. It, it brings the community in. I mean, you're expanding Fresh Market, MARTA Market at the Kensington Station. You know, soccer in the streets has just completed the, the two pitches. There's gonna be, I think, a big announcement in June, I think, for, you know, what's happening there. The World Cup is coming to Atlanta in twenty twenty-six. I mean, we have so much happening right now and, and I think, and I, I want us to, you know, take advantage of, of what we can do if we partner together and plan together. And, and so I want us to just do our best to think beyond just a quarterly update, here's how things are going. And maybe this is something that PWI can just hone in on. You know, I, I, I really think that we should be talking more about the transit hubs, station soccer. I think we should put more money into the safe routes to transit. And I don't wanna spend all meeting, get, go hashing through all this stuff. But when we only have a, you know, every three months to talk about it, it just sort of builds up. And I don't want us to be back here three months from now saying, well, you know, we're, we're still, we're still working on it. We just, we, in, in order for us to really move forward, I, I think, I mean, per, me, me speaking, you know, speaking personally, you know, I need the confidence to know that we're working on this, you know, every week. And the, the last meeting we had talking about transit, everyone seemed to be in favor of a link trip. And I really don't want us to be here three months from now saying, yeah, we'll do a link trip in twenty twenty-three. Because, you know, we're just, we're missing out on the opportunity to keep transit front and center. And I think we need to keep it front and center because as we're, you're describing in these presentations, a lot of these processes and planning just take years to complete. So any delay or any misstep or any confusion, which there's a little bit of confusion about what's happening in the timelines here today, it just further decreases our, you know, stature in the community on delivering what the constituents, I think, are asking us to, you know, see happen. And we can only go back to them so many times and say, well, we're still working with MARTA. You know, we don't wanna, I don't wanna, I'll, I'll cover for you for a little bit. But if we keep getting down the line of, we're just, we're gonna, we're, we're getting to it, we're getting to it, and it's another year delay, another two years delay, you know, at some point, our constituents are gonna say, well, I, I just don't believe you. And so we just have to, we have to be on the same accord here because there's a lot of big decisions we have to make. And I wanna set us up for success in twenty twenty-four to where the voters feel that the plan's in place. Everything that's happening is happening, you know, in coordination with all of us, as well as all the other things that are happening. I mean, we have our long-range planning that's happening right now, our transportation plan. I don't, I don't wanna get into whether we're coordinating on some of those sidewalk gaps to, to transit stops. You know, what we have done, you know, I think we're, I think we're doing a sidewalk analysis, right, Commissioner Patrick? So I did, I just wanna make sure we're, you know, being synergistic here in a lot of these discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. If I may respond, I, I'm not sure I can capture all of, all of that in response, but I'll, I'll do my best. Notably, I, I, I wanna say, yes, you're right. MARTA REACH at Avondale was expanded yesterday. Soccer in the stations at Kensington kicks off next month, I believe. So, you know, those are two initiatives that we perhaps could have brought forward today. We, we figured it would be a, you know, an extended agenda on the budget itself, but you're absolutely right. There are a lot of other things at play. And MARTA is proud to continue to participate in those things. The capacity to spend is something I opened with. And so, you know, your point about saying something to your constituents, only having to say to them later that it's been delayed, that is the message that, that MARTA heard over the last couple of years, and that is why we have approached our board and gotten permission to, to extend our power to our ability to, to, to spend and our ability to actually execute on these programs. So we have- Um, to extend our power to our ability to 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 spend and our ability to actually execute on these programs. So we have. Um, you know, as I said at the beginning, we have changed our structure, our organizational structure in many ways to. And so that we're poised to do just that, to deliver on the promises that we've already made. Um, to put you in a better position when you're speaking to your constituents, to have confidence in the dates that are set. We're also. Taking a look at how we set those dates and making sure that those are our timing is is mature and maturely taking into consideration some of the. Some of the things that we all know we have little control over in terms of supply chain and issues like that, so that we're more realistic in the dates that we give you. Um, bus network redesign, yes, absolutely. Something that, uh, you know, we have been partnering with. Our our various jurisdictions and land use planners throughout the regions, and that is something that continues. It's been a a huge um public outreach. Effort. We've so far heard from over eight thousand uh people, and, you know, just trying to gauge their interest in in the two bookend. Uh, types of networks, be it be it a ridership concept or a or a a coverage concept. And so that continues. We'll be, we'll be coming to our board shortly with recommendations, or at least with with updates, so that they can make some some um, some. Um, decisions about about what the network is, it should be looking like, and that'll be based, of course, on what the people have told us, as as well as. As other things, but we we will have another round of stakeholder engagement, which will include uh yourselves uh to give you an update. In terms of what the public has been saying and what those networks would look like. So more to come on that. Um, and team, if there's, if there's something else that, you know, you want to jump in on uh Manjut or or Raj, in terms of any of those comments, please feel free to support.
And just simply say that we share the commission's enthusiasm and um priority to deliver outstanding projects for DeKalb County and beyond for our system and. And uh, we do listen and we will be responsive.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, next I see the hand raised of Commissioner Larry Johnson, followed by Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Yeah, I I want to go back to this fifteenth amendment conversation, because you all agree. Um, with what was voted on, but I want the public to know the fifteenth amendment is based on facts and trends at the time. And what we voted. If you go back to twenty ten, when the tea splash was defeated in all the ten county regions. One of the main reason it was defeated because you had promised rail in South DeKalb. Sierra Club was with us. We had a lot of environmental groups, even had a tea party with us. Because it was a lot of things in there. It was promised it was not was not kept. And then you told me, Marta, this is not you, Mr. Greenwood. I've been through four directors. The the director who told me this said, well, we can build heavy rail in South DeKalb, and so I included it in the thirteenth amendment. And you can go back and look, that's fact, and you all agreed to that. Now all of a sudden, we move to the fifteen, it's too expensive. You can't do it. Then you gotta add, you gotta pay that extra penny in order to get it, but we know in equations, you can have A plus B equals C. It don't matter how you get there, it can still equal out, so we don't have to have that one penny up right now. In order for you to say or put money towards heavy rail in South DeKalb. So yes, the fifteenth amendment may say. All of these uh statements and subsets, but it doesn't preclude. Us still fighting for and making sure we keep the promise of heavy rail. So you may state all your facts you want on the fifteenth amendment. But that doesn't stop the fact that we need rail, have to have it, and it can be part of this conversation. The ball, the the can did get kicked down the road because MARTA started saying it was too expensive. It wasn't expensive ten years ago. It may be, of course, it may be expensive now, but you still have the capacity, I think, to get this rail done. Especially when I'm seeing a lot of these surpluses that can help be a down payment and also bonding capacity that you can do. If you really want to move forward with rail uh in South DeKalb. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. Cause every amendment has had its own set of facts and trends and rules when we voted. So maybe the fifteenth, this and the sixteenth may say we can do rail and light rail. So I just want to make sure that that's very clear. I know what I voted on. I know why I voted. But it's also be clear that it always before heavy rail in South DeKalb, period. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Sure, again, I I just had to, I just had to really comment on that to put the fifteenth amendment uh in the perspective. That it should be in, and um, and that is that uh we have been paying. Uh, one, we have been paying uh tax, a sales tax to MARTA. Since the seventies, and I just want people to know that the scale. Had been tilted. When it comes to heavy rail. From the seventies to now, is is always so to say that the fifteenth amendment. You know, is um, you complying with the fifteenth amendment, that may be good and well, but you're not providing rail. Equally throughout DeKalb County, and we have talked about it from the seventies to now, so this didn't begin. And it won't end with the next amendment, you know, but. Um, we see rail throughout other parts of the county, which is fine, which is good. But that scale has been tilted. And so we're in a position now. Financially, I think politically. Economically, where we can continue to look at uh bringing uh South DeKalb. Uh, to, I mean, bringing rail, heavy rail to South Central DeKalb, and so uh I'm for it. Uh, I'm sure the citizens are for it, because like, I remember even John Evans, the one man protested. Uh, you know, carrying his sign. Um, saying no more taxes to MARTA, and it was because of, and it has been because. Of the tilt in the scale when it comes to uh South DeKalb. So I'm glad that we're doing what we can now. We know what we need to do uh to continue the message forward, and I think that we're doing it. So. Thank you, but I just wanted to put some perspective uh on that fifteenth amendment. Because even though uh you may be within technically within the bounds of the fifteenth amendment. We want and has always wanted. Marta uh heavy rail in South DeKalb, and so if you continue to engage uh with the people. With the politicians, or I'd say the public officials. And everyone else that we need to engage in to bring this to fruition, uh we can get it done. So thank you. Uh, Larry, you've been here for a long time. I remember Hank was here on this commission. Uh, you know, and I remember um all of the fights that we've had. I've been living in South DeKalb since uh nineteen seventy-nine. And I know what the issues has been, and I've seen what has happened. And so I'm glad that we're at this point. It took us a while, but we're here and we can move forward. So no, you haven't fulfilled. MARTA as a whole has not fulfilled. An equitable distribution of funds that have been spent on MARTA from DeKalb, and that's what we're asking for. And that's what we uh continue to look forward uh to working on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Davis Johnson. Uh, Mr. Greenwood, uh, looks like my commission has sort of uh exhausted their comments for the time being. Um, perhaps a suggestion might be is uh perhaps staff can coordinate with individual commissioners, and we look into perhaps a a. Almost a monthly update with individual commissioners, uh, and so that what we do to come to this quarterly update. A lot of the other.
And 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 what, just one little thing, they were going to give written responses to Commissioner Johnson's. Uh, comments or questions. I would like a copy. I don't know if all of the commissioners would like it, but I would like a copy. Of 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 those responses as as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson. Mr. Greenwood, if you wouldn't mind, please be sure to copy uh the uh entire board of commissioners uh on those responses. Uh, especially as well, I know Commissioner Terry had several questions. Um, and I think he probably wants a little more in-depth responses on those. If you could be sure to address those as well and copy us all on them.
We will. I I'll commit to making sure that um that everyone's copied on those responses.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, commissioners, uh, with that said, and thank you, Mr. Greenwood and the MARTA staff for your presentation today. Uh, with that, I'd like to rely on Commissioner, excuse me, uh, Chief Operating Officer. Uh, Williams to help move us through the next phase of the agenda, the executive agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and thank you, members of the board. I'd like to begin the review of the proposed executive agenda for May twenty-fourth. With a proposed public hearing item, uh, which is item fifteen ninety-nine, small box discount store moratorium extension. And that would be extending the moratorium through uh seven thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Okay, followed by another um. Uh, proposed appointment, uh, and this is an appointment to the Fulton DeKalb Hospital Authority of Dr. Patrice El Basanta Henry. Um, and that is an appointment uh with an expiration date of eleven thirty twenty-three. We'd like to hear that in PEX.
Yes, sir. We'll hear it on the uh twenty-six. Is, can I have a question, Mr. Presiding Officer?
Go ahead, please.
How many other vacancies do we have?
Uh, we'll get you that number. I don't have it off the top of my head, Commissioner, but I can have it to you by the end of this meeting.
Yeah, we just need to get the, if you got opportunity, get the full board up and running. We need to have a full representation of the cab, similar to what we're doing with MARTA. The estimate that we're making at Grady, we need to have all of our appointees at that table, because there's some crucial decisions being made. And we only have one representative representative at the table, and they need, they need our help. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, pro- additional proposed preliminary items, uh, under the airport, there are three items. Uh, standard teehanger lease agreement with Murray Forbes, no cost to the county. Termination of a standard tea standardized teehanger lease agreement with Jim Flock, no cost to the county. And another standard standardized teehanger lease agreement with Michael C. Powell, no cost to the county.
And those can go on to consent unless there's any objection.
Thank you. Uh, so we have those for consent. The next item, under finance, um, this is a. Uh, item resolution authorizing membership in A C C G Interlocal Risk Management Agency Supplemental Medical Accident and Disability Fund. To obtain and maintain firefighter cancer insurance. So this is a relatively new. It's required by Georgia law. And what it does is uh at a cost of a hundred and five thousand dollars annually to the county, but it provides a. Uh, certain insurance for firefighters for cancer. So would you like to hear that in ERPs or? Mr. Chair, would you like it on consent? Chairman Terry?
Oh, for the uh sixteen twenty-three?
Uh, fifteen ninety-six, fifteen ninety-six.
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, we can hear it today. Shouldn't take too long, right?
No, 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 but it's it's just a good thing to to get out there. Okay, um. And under fire rescue services, um, item sixteen twenty-three, this is a donation of firefighting gear to the Terry Farrell Firefighters Fund. It's a five oh one C three organization, and what they do is they take old donated equipment and donate it to volunteer fire departments. The value of our donation is about five thousand dollars worth of old turnout gear.
Okay, uh, that can go to consent and there's no objection.
Uh, next item, uh, G I S, consider consenting to the deannexation of property located at two fifty West Parkwood Road in Decatur. It's approximately one-fifth of an acre.
Is that a PEX thing?
PEX or consent.
I'm fine with consent. I'm not familiar, not familiar with it.
You want to bring it to PEX, so you want to, well, you want to hear it and then it stay on consent? What you want to do? You want to?
Yeah, I think we should talk about it. I don't.
Okay, all right, PEX.
Okay, excellent. Next, we have approval and ratification of work. One second, leave. Next, we are into. Um, well, this approval ratification work completed for expended funds made by H E H paving for contract one one eight three five five nine. Um, total amount of seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars uh used by the Department of Public Works. Uh, contract consisting patching milling and resurfacing county roads. So this probably a a P W I item.
Um, yes, please allow it to come to committee. We'll, we'll hear it today. It's on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, next we have the purchasing and contracting items. Um, and each uh chair will typically take a look at their items. Um, the first ones are set for ERPs. Uh. The first change order, DeKalb Police Promotional Selection and Testing Process Services awarded to Industrial Organization Solutions. Uh, fourteen thousand seven sixty-five. Followed by Employee Health and Benefits Consulting Services used by Finance and Risk Management. Um, and this is uh. Uh, brokerage and consulting services, uh Buck Global, we've continued, we've used for quite some time. Uh, the third sole source first responder state specific policy training and support solution services. Awarded to Lexipol LLC amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand seven thirty-five fifty-five cents. Those are set for ERPs.
Yeah, we'll take them to committee today. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Fab Committee has a sole source uh maintenance and support benchmark case management. Uh, DeKalb County State Court awarded to Pioneer Technology Group, amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And uh, the chair is not present, but we would send that to Fab normally.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, under Ops, there are four uh items. The first change.
Yeah, I've already, I've already reviewed them. They're fine.
Thank you. And then we have PEX has one item.
Send it to PEX.
And P W I um has a. Quite a few items.
Yes, all of those will be heard today in committee.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the final two items are the final items under Parks and uh. Recreation Parks and Cultural Affairs. The first item is uh building a um. The grant from uh the Georgia Department of Education through the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association. And it is building opportunities for out of school uh summertime grant, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. Um, to assist our Parks and Recreation Department in providing summer programming for youth. And so that'd be consent or PEX, whatever you prefer, Mr. Chair.
Yes, say that one more time. That's the summer program?
Yes, this is a grant from the uh Georgia Department of Education through the Georgia Recreation Parks Association.
Okay, the grant, that consent, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. And then the final item is uh Mystery Valley, um, addition of two dollar capital improvement project. Fee to the various fee to the fee schedule, and the entire fee schedule is attached.
Didn't we talk, we talked about it if at PEX already, we just anticipating it, so.
Yeah, I I believe we've discussed it in the past, Commissioner.
All right, well, we'll hear it again.
Okay, so we'll have that for PEX. So Mr. Presiding Officer, I have no other items um to present.
All right, thank you.
Oh, Williams.
Yeah, I got.
Commissioners have any walk-on items?
I do, sir.
Commissioner Larry Johnson.
Yes, I have one walk-on. I think we'll probably go to Fab. It's uh the appointment of Jay Caroline. Caroline Freeman, Associate Judge for Probate. It's appointment by a chief bro- probate uh court judge, Hargrove. And so that goes uh, that's under Fab, so that's a position, so just wanted to put, walk that on for her. That's my item.
All right, and your next item?
Next item is uh for opera funds uh in the terms of a total thirty-five thousand. Uh, to work in conjunction with the um South DeKalb Y um life skills and civic skills, and also for the Police Athletic League. And help them with their uh midnight. And help them with their midnight basketball and other services they'll be providing. And so that will be thirty-five thousand from our Pueta account.
Okay.
For consent.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Larry Johnson. Commissioners, any other walk-on items that might be out there?
Mr. Presiding Officer?
I hear, I see you right now, Mr. Williams.
Is it appropriate time? If so, yes, I have an additional, a walk-on memorandum of agreement with Georgia Department of Transportation for additional Covington Highway Streetlights. There will be no cost to the county for installation, but the annual maintenance and operating costs are estimated to be three thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Additional streetlights for Covington Highway.
Okay. And I believe this.
I have a question.
Falls under. Go ahead, Commissioner Larry Johnson.
This is not on this item, but just, Mr. Williams, I reported this earlier, I twenty from Flat shows aggression. On the highway, the lights are out and this creates a hat, a safety hazard. So when focusing on lights, can we get that put on the radar screen? I don't know why it's, I don't know if the, if the wires have been, I know in the past somebody have stolen the brass out of them. Or if this in Atlanta, or did DeCab pay for those lights in that part of the, because it's tricky, because it could be on the city lines of the Capitol.
Sure, so Mr. Pelton will get an update to us today.
And the other part of it is, and I guess we can, Madam Chairwoman of PWI, if we get a chance, this is Infrastructure Week. And I had a chance to be with the mayors and various infrastructure partners. But I would love to see what we are applying for grants, because there's fifteen percent of the funding that's coming down the federal infrastructure pro, process that allows the counties to get directly. You don't have to go to the state. But I would love to see what are we applying for and what plans we have? Because we don't want to miss this boat of this one point three trillion dollars that's out there. And of course, the broadband, I want to make sure that we, we're taking advantage of that. So, Madam Chairwoman, you know, if we can, I don't know when, I know your agenda is always is pretty tight. But in the future, because I don't know when these grants are due, and you know how the money go quick. But just to see what our, our roadmap is for applying for these type of grants. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Larry Johnson. Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Yes, if I might, Mr. Presiding Officer, I'd like to respond to Commissioner Larry Johnson as it relates to what we are applying for. As I'm aware of funding, I always send it over to COO Williams for the dissemination of those packets to the appropriate parties so that action can be taken. So even independent of us holding a meeting or having it on this agenda, if there are grant fundings, as you are privy to DC and others that I may not be aware of, if you'll send that along, we can go ahead and move it so that the administration has the ability to review it and hopefully disseminate it and take action upon it. That would be the ask, and I will add any items to the upcoming agenda as we are full for today and look forward to that conversation. My hand was actually raised, Mr. Presiding Officer, because I have a substitute to an item that I had already presented. For One Powerhouse, it only changes the funding source. That is the only thing. So I would like to add that item to the agenda, the substitute.
Perfect, thank you.
Let me, let me just add, Mr. Presiding Officer, just for our chair, I did, Zach has, is privy to all of that information. Mr. Pelton, I just wanted to make sure that they are sharing with us on what they're applying for and what type of infrastructure projects, because it may be Commissioners who may want certain projects that may not be listed in the ask. So I just want to make sure that was aware, but if you, you on top of it, which I know you are, and I just want to make sure that other people may hear it. Thank you, sir. And thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
All right. CEO Williams?
Yes, Mr. Presiding Officer, I just wanted to ensure that the item for the Covington Highway Streetlights, I don't know if we actually added that. I think we stopped in the middle of that.
And I just wanted to be clear, Commissioner Cochrane Johnson, is this something appropriate for Public Works?
Uh, yes.
Would we have time on our schedule today to add this one on?
We can certainly try. We do have a very full schedule for today, as we do have two presentations. And I believe we have a total of eight items. So it can be added. And if we are unable to, to get to the item, unless it's time-sensitive, we will do what we must.
Sounds good. Okay. All right, Commissioners, with that said, we'll move on to the next section of our agenda, which is review of Board of Commissioners' preliminary agenda items under paragraph B. We have appointments. Board of Commissioners, District Four, approve the appointment of Dr. Gerald D. Austin Senior to the Charter Review Commission. Believe that is be consent.
Mr. Presiding Officer, if I can make one brief statement pursuant to that?
Please.
Thank you. Just for my colleagues and the, the public, my original appointee to the Charter Review Commission was Mr. Brandon Wagner. Great guy, did a good job pursuant to that, but as it turns out, since that original appointment was made, he no longer resides in District Four. So I thought my representative from District Four should be a resident of District Four, and Dr. Austin has generously agreed to step up and serve in this role. So we'll move his appointment, if there's no objection, to, through our normal process, and I will yield back to the chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Bradshaw. With that being said, moving on to our preliminaries, Board of Commissioners, Agenda Item sixteen twenty, approval of the minutes from May seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two, committee of the whole meeting, put that on for consent. Again, from District Six, Agenda Item sixteen fifty-two, approve twenty-five thousand dollars from District Six ARP appropriations to support B Somebody, pardon me, B Someone Incorporated's Summer Break Virtual Chess and Life Skills Instruction Program? We also have Agenda.
Yeah, that one, if that one could go to consent, please.
Consent, okay. Agenda Item sixteen fifty-three, approve a hundred thousand dollars, District Six ARP appropriation that will be dispersed in twenty-five thousand dollar annual increments over the next four years to support the DeCab Community Service Board's Apex Program, Summer Camp Program.
Yes, this is a, this is a request that came from the Community Service Board, and I'd like to, if we can, discuss it further in the PEX Committee.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we'll hear it on the twenty-sixth. I don't know why I keep saying twenty-eighth, but the twenty-sixth.
All right. And then Agenda Item sixteen fifty-six, to amend the code of DeCab County, Georgia, as revised in nineteen eighty-eight, Chapter Twenty, Article Eight, to recognize General Election Day as a paid county holiday.
And we can take that in ERPs Committee.
Would that be ERPs or Ops?
ERPs.
I believe ERPs would be the right location for that one.
Okay.
And then for District Seven, we have Agenda Item sixteen forty-eight, and I will note that there was a substitute, I believe, that we've already spoken to. Appropriate Corona, Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES, assigned to Pueta Account Number, and everybody can read that number. Reserve for District Seven appropriations to the community-based organization described in the fiscal impact section of this agenda item below for the purpose of providing emergency rent, mortgage, utility, and food assistance to DeCab residents and the Clarkston Refugee Community who have been severely impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
Yes, I would ask that since this is discretionary and of course, it's for providing emergency rent, mortgage, utility, and food assistance, that it is forwarded to consent. The substitute.
Understood. Next, we have Clerk to the Board of Commissioners and CEO, Agenda Item sixteen oh five, approval of minutes of the special call meeting of May three, two thousand and twenty-two. We also have sixteen thirty-two, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners, meeting of May ten, two thousand and twenty-two. Those would be consent. And finally, we have, under Juvenile Court, Agenda Item sixteen hundred, request for approval of contract in the amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with Construction Education Foundation of Georgia.
We'll hear that in PEX, that's fine.
Okay. All right, with that, I'd like to ask Dr. Obang to review the agenda for us.
Much, Mr. Presiding Officer. Starting off, we have a proposed public hearing item fifteen ninety-nine regarding the small box discount store moratorium. We have a proposed appointment from the CEO's office. This is item sixteen fifty-four, which is the appointment of Patrice L. Bassanta Henry, and that is slated for PEX on the twenty-sixth. We have proposed preliminary items. We have three items from the airport that are slated for consent. These are fifteen eighty-two, fifteen ninety-one, and sixteen sixteen. We have a finance item fifteen ninety-six, the resolution authori, authorizing membership in ACCD's Interlocal Risk Management Agency that is slated for ERPs. We have a fire and services item sixteen twenty-three that's slated for consent. We have a GIS item sixteen twenty-seven that's slated for PEX. We have item fifteen ninety-two that's slated for PWI. For purchasing and contracting for ERPs, we have fifteen thirty-four, fifteen sixty-four, fifteen seventy-nine. And for Fab, purchasing and contracting, we have fifteen forty-five. For Ops, we have items twelve twenty-three, fifteen thirty-six, fifteen thirty-nine, and fifteen forty-one. We have one item for PEX, which is fifteen ninety. For PWI, purchasing and contracting, we have fourteen zero seven, fourteen fifteen, fourteen fifty-three, fifteen twenty-two, fifteen twenty-three, fifteen twenty-five, fifteen thirty-three, sixteen zero four, sixteen fourteen, and sixteen twenty-four. We have a parts and rec item fifteen eighty-seven that's slated for consent and sixteen twenty-eight that's slated for PEX. We have appointments, sixteen forty-seven, which is the appointment to the Charter Review for District Four. And walk-on items, we have.
Commissioner, hello?
Yes, sir. Hey, how are you?
Sorry. For walk-ons, we have an item from Probate Court that is being sponsored by D Three, which I believe is slated for consent, and also thirty-five K for the South DeCab Y and the Police, Police Athletic League that's slated for consent. We have an MOU from the CEO's office for Covington Highway Streetlights that's slated for PWI and a substitute for sixteen forty-eight from District Seven for the One Powerhouse Project. We have preliminary items, approval of minutes for committee of the whole meeting for May seventeen, that is slated sixteen twenty, that's slated for consent. We have items from District Six. We have sixteen fifty-two, which is slated for consent, which is AR, ARP appropriation to a virtual chess and life skills instruction program. We have sixteen fifty-three, which is slated for PEX on the twenty-sixth, which is funds going to a summer camp program. We have sixteen fifty-six, which is the resolution to recognize, to amend the code of DeCab County, sorry, to recognize General Election Day as a paid holiday, which is slated for ERPs. This is item sixteen fifty-six. And again, we have the walk-on item from sixteen forty-eight. We have two items slated for consent, which are from the Clerk's office. These are approval of the minutes for the special call meeting on May third. This is sixteen zero five, and sixteen thirty-two, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners for May tenth. And we have a contract approval for Construction Education Foundation of Georgia, which is slated for PEX. This is item sixteen hundred. And that concludes the week at, Mr. Presiding Officer.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Obang. Commissioners, it looks like we have a request to go into executive session for today. Could I get a motion to have a special call meeting?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Cochrane Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson. Give me one second and we will move to the roll on that. Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
I am.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, six zero on the motion for a special call meeting. And now I need to ask for a motion to go into executive session, I believe, for the purposes of legal.
So moved.
All right, thank you again, Commissioner Cochrane Johnson. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioners, it's for litigation purposes.
Litigation, thank you for the correction.
That's all right.
Just to be clear, Madam, or Commissioner Cochrane Johnson, you're good with the correct phrase?
Absolutely.
All right.
It remains.
Thank you. We'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that as well, six zero. All right, everyone, please stay in tune. We'll be back.
And thank you, Mr. Presiding.
And thank you, Mr. Presiding.
All right, thank you so much everyone for hanging with us through the executive session we just had. I'd like to ask my commissioners for a motion to leave executive session.
So moved.
All right, thank you Commissioner Bradshaw. Can I get a second? Second?
Second.
All right, thank you Commissioner Larry Johnson. With that, we'll go ahead and call the roll. Give me just one second here. Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson? Oh, all right. Chair votes eye on that. That's five zero in the affirmative. All right. Commissioner Terry, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you Presiding Officer Patrick. Yes, I have a motion. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve payment in the total gross amount of $190,000 to settle Symetra Brooks employment-related claims against DeKalb County in connection with a proposed settlement agreement between DeKalb County and the United States of America concerning those claims. To resolve Ms. Brooks' employment-related claims asserted by the U.S. Department of Justice in threatened litigation, the county will pay the total gross amount of $190,000 to Ms. Brooks and her counsel in return for and conditioned on Ms. Brooks' execution of a negotiated release of her claims and conditioned on court approval of the proposed settlement agreement between DeKalb County and the United States of America regarding Ms. Brooks' claim. The county attorney or her designee is authorized to sign the settlement agreement.
All right, thank you Commissioner Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Commissioner Bradshaw. We've got a proper motion and second. We'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And chair votes eye on that, six zero. Thank you very much commissioners. Next Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson?
Yes, I think that Attorney Johnson will be reading that motion for me please.
Okay.
On behalf of Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve payment in the total amount of $2,000 as part of a global multi-party settlement to settle plaintiff Amber S. Castle's claims against defendants to DeKalb County, former Sheriff Jeffrey Mann, and sheriff employees Minerva Perry, Donnie Lot, Shanika Terry, and Sonya Davis in Civil Action Number One, Colon Twenty-One CB-01938 in the U.S. District Court, Northern District of Georgia. To resolve the claims against defendants to DeKalb County, Mann, Perry, Lot, Terry, and Davis, the county will pay the total amount of $2,000 as part of the global settlement to plaintiff Castle and her attorneys in return for and conditioned on plaintiff's dismissal with prejudice of her claims against all defendants and plaintiff's execution of a settlement agreement with a full and final release and waiver of claims satisfactory to the county attorney. The county attorney or her designee is authorized to sign the settlement agreement.
All right, thank you Commissioner Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Commissioner Bradshaw. We've got a proper motion and second. We'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And chair votes eye as well. Commissioners, everybody, we have completed our agenda for the 17th of May. Thank you very much. We have agenda committee meetings coming up this afternoon and we'll see you then. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, everyone, for hanging with us through the executive session we just had. I'd like to ask my commissioners for a motion to leave executive session.
So moved.
All right, thank you Commissioner Bradshaw. Can I get a second? Second?
Second.
All right, thank you Commissioner Larry Johnson. With that, we'll go ahead and call the roll. Give me just one second here. Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson? Oh, all right, Chair votes eye on that. That's five zero in the affirmative. All right. Commissioner Terry, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you Presiding Officer Patrick. Yes, I have a motion. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve payment in the total gross amount of $190,000 to settle Symetra Brooks employment-related claims against DeKalb County in connection with a proposed settlement agreement between DeKalb County and the United States of America concerning those claims. To resolve Ms. Brooks' employment-related claims asserted by the U.S. Department of Justice and threatened litigation, the county will pay the total gross amount of $190,000 to Ms. Brooks and her counsel in return for and conditioned on Ms. Brooks' execution of a negotiated release of her claims and conditioned on court approval of the proposed settlement agreement between DeKalb County and the United States of America regarding Ms. Brooks' claim. The county attorney or her designee is authorized to sign the settlement agreement.
All right, thank you Commissioner Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Commissioner Bradshaw. We've got a proper motion and second. We'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes eye on that, six zero. Thank you very much Commissioners. Next Commissioner Maria Davis Johnson?
Uh, yes, I think that Attorney Johnson will be reading that motion for me, please.
Okay.
On behalf of Commissioner Maria Davis Johnson, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve payment in the total amount of $2,000 as part of a global multi-party settlement to settle plaintiff Amber S. Castle's claims against defendants to DeKalb County, former Sheriff Jeffrey Mann, and Sheriff Employees Minerva Perry, Donnie Lot, Shanika Terry, and Sonya Davis in Civil Action Number One, Colon Twenty-One CB-01938 in the U.S. District Court, Northern District of Georgia. To resolve the claims against defendants to DeKalb County, Mann, Perry, Lot, Terry, and Davis, the county will pay the total amount of $2,000 as part of the global settlement to plaintiff Castle and her attorneys in return for and conditioned on plaintiff's dismissal with prejudice of her claims against all defendants and plaintiff's execution of a settlement agreement with a full and final release and waiver of claims satisfactory to the county attorney. The county attorney or her designee is authorized to sign the settlement agreement.
So moved.
Thank you for the motion. And do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you again Commissioner Bradshaw. With that, we'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes eye as well. Commissioners, everybody, we have completed our agenda for the 17th of May. Thank you very much. We have agenda, uh, committee meetings coming up this afternoon, and we'll see you then. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you.
I did it for my health.
I did it for my mother.
I did it for the people I served.
I go por mis nietos y por mi.
I did it for my friends.
I took the COVID vaccine because I have a strong desire to maintain my health and enjoy life.
I got the vaccine for my family, uh, for my partner, and just overall better quality of life.
Me vacuné por mis nietos y por mí, porque es importante si yo no me cuido, no puedo cuidarlo a ellos.
So I got the vaccine not only for myself, but, uh, for those I served and also the community around me.
Anything that would protect me and my family, that was a easy decision.
The DeKalb County Police Department wants to keep you and your family safe on the roads, whether you're traveling by vehicle, motorcycle. The DeKalb County Police Department wants to keep you and your family safe on the roads, whether you're traveling by vehicle, motorcycle, bicycle, or on foot. I'm Lieutenant Gregory Vanderpool with Special Operations Division, Traffic Section. In 2018, there were more than 45,000 vehicle accidents in DeKalb County, the most in metro Atlanta. That includes 92 fatalities, the second highest number for traffic-related deaths in metro Atlanta. Teenage drivers face the highest risk of any age group, being nearly three times more likely to be in a fatal crash than those aged 20 and older. Excessive speed is a significant contributing factor in vehicle crashes, but it's not the only one. Twenty-nine of the DeKalb County fatalities in 2018 involved people who did not use pedestrian crosswalks. That's almost one-third of all traffic fatalities in 2018. Use a crosswalk whenever available. Crossing the street outside a crosswalk is dangerous, even if you're near it, but not inside it. Also, don't cross when the signal indicates "don't walk." Finally, walking in the roadway while intoxicated is very dangerous. We're here to support you and keep the DeKalb County safe. The message is clear: If you cross the street, use a crosswalk every time. This public safety message brought to you by the DeKalb County Police Department and DCTV. Hi, I'm Henry Cloughton with DCTV Channel 23, and if you're a Georgia driver, I have some very important information for you. Did you know the new hands-free law passed by the Georgia General Assembly will be enforced on all Georgia drivers? A driver cannot have their phone in their hand, nor can they use any part of their body to support their phone. So that means no texting, no checking social media, and of course, no selfies. However, you are allowed to use your mobile device inside of your vehicle, only if your vehicle is legally parked, reporting a medical emergency, or contacting the first responder. For more information, visit headsupgeorgia.com backslash handsfree-lock. So DeKalb, be smart, be safe, and most importantly, be hands-free. Did you know more than 40,000 people are killed each year in traffic collisions? One out of every four car accidents in the United States is caused by texting and driving. That's 25% of all vehicle accidents. How you doing, sir? Lieutenant Vanderpool with the DeKalb County Police. I need to see your driver's license, please. Do you know the reason why I pull you over, sir? For operating motor vehicles while on your phone? My name is Lieutenant Gregory Vanderpool with the DeKalb County Police Department, Traffic Section. In addition to being extremely unsafe, texting while driving is against the law. Under Georgia law, drivers cannot have a phone in their hand or any part of their body to support their phone. Also, drivers cannot read, write, or send text messages or emails when on the road. A phone is a deadly distraction. Reading a text message while driving distracts a driver for a minimum of five seconds each time. This means the chances of a crash occurring while reading a text are extremely high. Here's a copy of the citation for you as well, and here's your driver's license, Beth. All right, have a good evening, sir. Remember, one text or one call can wreck it all. This public safety message is brought to you by the DeKalb County Police Department and DCTV.
Welcome to the DeKalb County Courthouse. I am Chief Judge Asha Jackson, and I'm so glad you're here. Your safety is of the utmost importance. Please watch the video, which will give you specific instructions on how to stay safe while you're here at the courthouse. And please remember to wear your mask or face covering while you're here in the building. Again, welcome and stay safe.
We are pleased to welcome you to the DeKalb County Courthouse and our partner facilities. Please know that your health and safety are our top priorities. In an effort to reduce the spread of COVID-19 while serving your needs, we have implemented several safety measures and protocols.
Hello, hello. You don't mind standing right over here on this red TV?
Guests visiting our facilities will be required to submit to health and temperature screenings prior to entry and security clearance. If you are ill or have been exposed to someone with a COVID-19 diagnosis, we ask that you remain home until otherwise directed by a health professional. Once inside our facilities, you must wear a mask or face covering at all times. Pay close attention to our signage and space markers to assist you with following proper social distancing guidelines. To keep you safe within our facilities, we have increased the frequency of cleaning for high-touch surfaces and common areas. You'll also find newly installed hand sanitizing stations throughout our buildings and floors for your use. What's more, the entire courthouse has also been outfitted with an air filtration system. You can't see it, but it's there protecting you.
This is an advanced system and enhancement to the heating and air system that will clean the air particles that continuously circulate in the courthouse.
Visible HEPA filters also provide an extra level of air sanitation. Where appropriate, throughout the buildings and courtrooms, Plexiglas dividers have been installed to protect the public and court personnel. Seating options have also been reduced in high-density areas.
Elevator A going down.
There is also limited capacity in our elevators, which now only travel to one floor at a time.
The significance of this is that if you are traveling to the floor that you have selected, you can have assurances that other people will not be entering or exiting your elevator until after you have exited your elevator at your designated floor.
To accommodate these new courthouse enhancements and safety protocols, be sure to budget extra time for your visit. To expedite the process, we ask that you limit your personal belongings and the number of people in your party. If possible, please refrain from bringing children unless their presence is required for your visit.
We intend to make sure that the public feels safe when they come here to receive services in the DeKalb County Courts. And so to that end, we will continue to have a mask mandate. We will ask that people wear a face mask or covering and a face shield, that they socially distance, that they wash and sanitize their hands frequently, and that they follow the protocol as directed by the courthouse personnel.
In the meantime, please feel free to visit our partner agencies online for detailed information regarding their hours of operation and services. Appointments may be required for certain services or information. We look forward to seeing you soon. Until then, stay safe and be well.
Did you know kids who play outdoors have healthier lungs?
Totally.
I did. Did you know that boys that play with dolls make better husbands?
My son has lots of dolls.
But did you know tattered cloth diapers breathe better?
I did.
It's totally true.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Did you know that strollers have the right of way on the sidewalk?
Yes.
Yep, I did. Did you guys know?
Did you know that kids who eat breakfast have higher GPA's?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, that's actually what I was gonna say.
Did you know babies should never touch silver? It's really bad for them.
I knew that.
Did you guys know that statistically friendly kids have more friends?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's obvious.
Did you know most people think they're using the right car seat for their kid, but they're not?
Parents who really know it all know for sure that their child is in the right seat at the right age and size. Visit safercar.gov/the-right-seat to make sure your child is protected.
I'm putting that on my blog.
I just put it.
Want a beautiful shade tree planted in your front yard? DeKalb County is making it easier than ever to expand our beautiful tree canopy. Now in its second year, Relief DeKalb is a program brought to you by the County's Department of Planning and Sustainability and Trees Atlanta. Residents of unincorporated DeKalb County can purchase up to two trees per home for only $25. Tree lovers know the many benefits of these wonderful plants. Trees clean the air and provide oxygen. Trees increase property values. Trees create shade and reduce cooling costs. Trees provide food and shelter for birds and wildlife. And trees add natural beauty to your home. For more details and to sign up for the Relief DeKalb Tree Planting Program, visit treesatlanta.org/yardtree.
I did it for my health.
I did it for my mother.
I did it for the people I served.
I go por mis nietos y por mi.
I did it for my friends.
I took the COVID vaccine because I have a strong desire to maintain my health and enjoy life.
I got the vaccine for my family, uh, for my partner, and just overall better quality of life.
Me vacuné por mis nietos y por mí, porque es importante si yo no me cuido, no puedo cuidarlo a ellos.
So I got the vaccine not only for myself, but, uh, for those I served and also the community around me.
Anything that would protect me and my family, that was a easy decision.
Did you know more than 40,000 people are killed each year in traffic collisions? Every 16 minutes, a deadly car accident occurs. My name is Lieutenant Gregory Vanderpool with the DeKalb County Police Department, Traffic Section. The law requires all drivers and their passenger to wear a safety belt while vehicles are moving. Why not take a few extra seconds to buckle up? It only takes two or three seconds. Even buckling up 20 times a day requires a minute or less. The simple act of buckling up is the best way to save lives and reduce injuries from crashing. In a crash, wearing a seatbelt reduces your chance of being killed or seriously injured by 50%. It takes only an instant to die or to become permanently injured in a crash. Remember, buckle up, stay alive, arrivalive. This public safety message is brought to you by the DeKalb County Police Department and DCTV. Hi, I'm Henry Cloughton with DCTV Channel 23, and if you're a Georgia driver, I have some very important information for you. Did you know the new hands-free law passed by the Georgia General Assembly will be enforced on all Georgia drivers? A driver cannot have their phone in their hand, nor can they use any part of their body to support their phone. So that means no texting, no checking social media, and of course, no selfies. However, you are allowed to use your mobile device inside of your vehicle, only if your vehicle is legally parked, reporting a medical emergency, or contacting the first responder. For more information, visit headsupgeorgia.com backslash handsfree-lock. So DeKalb, be smart, be safe, and most importantly, be hands-free.
Let's give a round of applause for our recruits. That was amazing. Agree? Uh, good afternoon. My name is Captain Haygood. I will be your emcee for today's.
Supremely great, all wise, all merciful one, thou who orders our breath and our very steps, thou God, we come today with reverence, asking you to touch and bless this occasion with your powerful hand. Have mercy on us, O God. Out of your goodness and out of your abundance of compassion, blot out any offense. Lord, with resolute faith and trust in you, we claim your providential word which declares that all things work together for the good, for them that love the Lord and are called according to God's purpose. Lord, we come here today asking you to bless those joining ranks today and to give them the strength to serve the present age. Bless them, O Lord, with a will to power and abilities that remain sharp. Bless us all, O Lord, with the energy and protection to weather any storm, survive any challenge, endure any hardship. We declare that all praises be unto you, O God. Lord, continue to uplift this department, this great county that we serve, its citizens and stakeholders. Lead us and guide us each and every day, each and every way as we travel down life's highway, in your merciful name let us all say, "Amen."
Thank you very much. Okay. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce to you our command staff. To my left, we'll start with our fire chief, Chief Darnell Fulham. Chief Carter. Chief Voorhees. Chief Roberts. Captain Stroop. Captain McCullough. Instructor Goddard. Instructor Gray. Instructor Heindl. Instructor Leota. Instructor Lillard. Instructor Martin. Instructor McCullough. Instructor Mc- Miss- Instructor MacWilliams, I apologize. Instructor Morris. Instructor Payne. Instructor Riggs. Instructor Skilling. And finally, Instructor Trotty. Let's give it up for these wonderful instructors who have taken the time to make sure these recruits make it to this day today. At this time, I'd like to recognize anyone in the audience that are members of the military, retired military, current firefighters, retired firefighters, or family members servicing other fire departments, please stand. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, thank you for your service. Thank you for supporting your loved ones during this long, intense, vigorous, strenuous, rewarding process on becoming one of DeKalb County's elite group of men and women. So give yourself a round of applause. Is that all you got? Come on, we can do better. Give yourself a round of applause.
Well, good afternoon. How's everybody doing? Oh, yeah, come on, we can do better than that. How you doing? We should be excited because these people are finally graduating, right? Make some noise, woo! Class 117. Oh my goodness, seemed like it took forever to get here. How many of you are glad that this is over? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, I always have to say that we also have to give a hand to the finest fire department in the state, if not the nation, the DeKalb County Fire Rescue. Give it up! Yeah, 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 yeah. It's my fire department, right? All right, so I have the honor and privilege of sharing with you the special awards. So these are people that kind of did some, I guess you would call them special things during recruit class. So we'll always start with the academic award. So the academic award, of course, goes to the person with the highest GPA. Now this young man was kind of interesting to me. First of all, his grade point average was a 98.1. That's pretty amazing, okay? Now we have two portions, firefighter one, firefighter two. In the firefighter two portion, out of seven tests, six of his tests were 100s. Fat brains, he has a fat brain, this guy's smart. So, the person who receives this academic award is Mr. Dustin Bloom. All right, so every class has to complete a PCT. Now, a PCT is 11 skills that these firefighters have to perform. And it's probably over a distance, and I'm guessing now, I'm guessing, but it's probably about 150 yards. They do this in full turnout gear, breathing air, right? Instructor Heindl likes to call it 13 minutes of pure difficulty. You thought I was gonna say it, no, 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 I'm not gonna say, family show, family show. But anyway, so it's 11 different skills that they have to perform, and trust me, it is very difficult, very difficult. Now, we have to kind of give honor to the guys who are able to do this in a seven-minute timeframe. Now understand, 11 exercises over 150 yards, I can't, I'm not adequately giving you an understanding of how difficult this is. But we had three gentlemen who were able to complete this within a seven-minute timeframe, and they're part of what we like to call the Seven Minute Club. Those three gentlemen are Mr. Jenkins, come on over, Mr. Bloom, and Mr. Barker, give it up. Now, you don't get one. I was just kidding, hang on. Now, out of the three of these gentlemen, the one who had the fastest time, which was 7 minutes and 20 seconds, is Mr. Barker, give it up. He kind of surprised me, but he did it. Good job, sir. Thank you, gentlemen, have a seat. All right, this next award is what I like to call the Exemplary Attitude Award. Yeah, this award goes to somebody who, no matter what you asked them to do, they did it with everything they had. And not only did they do it with everything they had, they pretty much smiled the whole time. We have a seven-story tower, we could have thrown him off of the seven-story tower and he would have smiled the whole way down to the ground. This guy's attitude was amazing, to the point to where, when I asked the question, "Who do you think should get the Exemplary Attitude Award?", it was unanimous without a second thought, Mr. Armando Torajon. See, look at him, look at him. Right on. Any organization that does magnificent things, any organization that grows and does great things for the community, such as a fire department, needs not just good leadership, but great leadership. So just for me, I want to give a hand to our leadership, can we do that? Now, part of what we do in the Fire Academy is try to get these young men and women ready to be a part of the fire department at large. And one thing they have to understand is that we have a particular order that we have to follow. You don't just run up to people and start asking questions. There is an order, and there are certain people that you need to speak to in a particular order. So, what we do is we have squad leaders, we have a class leader and squad leaders. And I tell these guys and girls usually when we get started, if this class is going to be successful, it will be successful because of the hard work of these young men who basically take on the leadership of all of this class on their shoulders. And anything that we ask them to do, they make it happen, they make it happen. So, my squad leaders for this class was Bloom, come on up, Joe Henson, Mr. Keebler, or Kubler, I'm calling him Keebler, I'm sorry, Popknot Campbell, Hicks and Smith, give them a hand. Now, with this group of guys, I had one guy in particular who was in charge of these guys and pretty much all of the recruits. Anything we needed, if there was an issue, we went to him first. And the reality is, we kind of let him know early on, if we look bad, you look worse. So make sure that everything we ask to be done, that you do it as it should be done, to the best of your ability. So, our class leader for this class was Mr. Barker, and he gets the Leadership Award. Come on down, sir. All right, we're getting to the end, I know I always take too long, I talk too much, na-na-na-na-na. Yeah, I love talking. Okay, next award, this is what we call our Lionheart Award. Now, I like this award because this award usually is given to a person who rode the struggle bus quite a bit in recruit school, meaning they had some difficulties. It was not easy for this person, but they persevered, they never quit. And I'll just go ahead and say it, she did a lot of stuff that I know she had some problems with. The reason I say, I'll go ahead and say she, because she's the only one in the class. So, you know, it kind of gave it away when I said she. But Ms. Gwen started out with some difficulties, seriously, but she overcame every last one of them. She worked hard, and she's here today. Now, there are a lot of people who didn't make it here today, but she did. So let's give it up for Ms. Chloe Gwen. All right, so there's one more, one more, and then I want to say a couple of things and I'll sit down. So, we had a recruit that everybody said, oh, well, let me preface it this way, they said, "This guy is coming back." I'm like, "Seriously? This guy's coming back?" Now, the reason I say seriously, because he worked here, he started in the recruit class in 797? 1997. So, they said, "He's coming back for this class." Now, I'm not gonna tell them how old you are, sir. Do you mind? I can tell them. This guy's coming back and he is 48 years old. Yes, give him a hand. Because the first thing I said was, "Is he crazy? Has he lost his mind?" But no, he decided he wanted to come back and be a part of the best fire department in the southeast. Now, I'm not gonna lie to you, I was worried about this guy. Because I'm like, I know how we do what we do out there, and we go, we go hard. But he came back, and I was really glad to see that he was willing to put forth the effort to do what needed to be done. Now, initially, when we talked about doing this award, it was kind of a gag for me, I'm not gonna lie to you. But the more I thought about it, and the more I thought about what it took for him to come back, that's pretty big, and I felt like we needed to recognize that. So, Mr. John McClain, come on down, sir, and get the award that I like to call "So Nice, I Did It Twice." Yeah, give it up, that's pretty awesome. Not to mention that I worked with his dad at Station 16, so he's a legacy kid, if we can use the word kid for a 48-year-old man, but yes. So, real quick, and I'll sit down and get out of you guys' way, I'd like to leave the class with a final word, if you will. So, I thought about something that I say a lot, and I always, I try to remember where I got it from, and I finally remembered the other day. So, when I was in high school, I ran track for a little bit, and I had a track coach who showed us this video of this guy who had finally won like the 100-yard dash or something. I mean, he had run track for a long time and finally got to senior year, he finally won the 100-yard dash. And I hate to say, I don't remember the guy's name, I'm sorry, but he was a high school student. But, coach showed us this video, it's the 80s, so you can imagine what the hair looked like, right? So it's the 80s, he shows us this video, and they asked the guy, "How is it that after all this time of losing, 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 that you finally figured out some kind of strategy to win?" And he said two things that I thought was awesome. Number one, and y'all have heard me say this before, he didn't really say it this way, but I say it this way, "Your greatest competition is your last best effort." See, this guy said something I thought was cool, he said, "I don't race the other runners anymore, I race the clock, because I can never beat the clock. I might be able to beat the guy next to me, but I'll never beat the clock. So if I use the guy next to me as a gauge, I might be much faster than him, and I can leave him in the dust, and I'll never really get to my best." So, your best, your greatest competition is not the guy or girl next to you, it's your last best effort. Second thing he said that I thought was awesome, he said, "I learn from everybody." So he would say, "If I'm driving down the street and I see somebody jogging," he says he actually studies how that person is running. He said anytime he would see a person run, he would study what they were doing, whether it was good, bad, or indifferent, it didn't matter, because he was studying and putting together how to best make his moves when he ran. And if he would find a new move, he said he would practice it 500 times. So he said his start, he practiced his start 500 times, until it became natural, until every time he started, he just took off, didn't have to think about it. Now, I'm saying this to you as firefighters, I'm saying this to all of us, but particularly to you guys, because you're about to graduate. Number one, don't worry about competition, be your best, and try to beat your last best, because that's your real gauge. It's not the other person, it's you, it's your best. And number two, learn from everybody, even if they're not as smart as you, even if they're not as fast as you, even if you don't think the most of that person, you can still learn from everybody. So learn from the greats, and learn- See, this guy said something I thought was cool. He said, "I don't race the other runners anymore. I race the clock because I can never beat the clock. I might be able to beat the guy next to me, but I'll never beat the clock. So if I use the guy next to me as a gauge, I might be much faster than him, and I can leave him in the dust, and I'll never really get to my best." So your best, your greatest competition is not the guy or girl next to you, it's your last best effort. Second thing he said that I thought was awesome. He said, "I learned from everybody." So he would say, "If I'm driving down the street and I see somebody jogging", he says he actually studies how that person is running. He said anytime he would see a person run, he would study what they were doing, whether it was good, bad, or indifferent. It didn't matter. Because he was studying and putting together how to best make his moves when he ran. And if he would find a new move, he said he would practice it 500 times. So he said his start, he practiced his start 500 times until it became natural, until every time he started, he just took off, didn't have to think about it. Now, I'm saying this to you as firefighters. I'm saying this to all of us, but particularly to you guys because you're about to graduate. Number one, don't worry about competition. Be your best, and try to beat your last best, because that's your real gauge. It's not the other person, it's you, it's your best. And number two, learn from everybody. Even if they're not as smart as you, even if they're not as fast as you, even if you don't think the most of that person, you can still learn from everybody. So learn from the greats, and learn from those that you think don't know as much as you do. All right, thank you, guys. Great job. Awesome job. I wish y'all the best. I want to hear about your first fire.
Let's give it up one more time for Instructor Gray. It's always amazing after he completes their award ceremony. I feel so touched, and I feel like I'm starting all over again, so thank you, Instructor Gray and Academy staff. At this time, we'd like to bring up Recruit Cantrell and Recruit Maze, if you guys will come to the podium.
How's everybody doing this afternoon? All right, I won't try to take up too much of you guys' time. I just want to channel this class's journey. And she just said I'm Recruit Cantrell. So I want to start by acknowledging our Fire Chief Fulham and the executive staff here, so if we can get them a hand. I also want to give a round of applause to the whole Fire and EMS training staff. You guys did a phenomenal job with us. I also want to thank, you know, our admin too, Ms. Hopkins and Ms. White for having all our paperwork good to go. I know Instructor Martin is a big part of that as well, so give her a hand. And another group that deserves more praise and can be given are you all in the audience. You know, parents, spouses, significant others, family, friends. You know, the support you guys given us, the understanding you guys have given us throughout this journey has been tremendous. You all have stuck by our side at our highs and lows. So we want to just thank you for your continued support that we will need because the journey is really just beginning now. And last but not least, I'd like to thank and acknowledge Class 117. These guys over here, and Gwen as well. They've truly changed my perspective on life and had an incredible impact on how I see things and how I interact with people. So I just want to kind of chronicle our journey throughout these 13 months. And just want to say, tell you guys a little bit about our story. So of course, the class began with, it began with 39 of us, so we start with our EMS training. So this special class had the opportunity of earning our As, our AEMT, so that means advanced, for those who don't know, an advanced EMT. So we began that, we began that journey with 39 recruits at headquarters for EMS training. And you know, guys, when we first got in, we received the "Look to Your Left, Look to Your Right" speech. The person, you know, those two people are probably gonna be gone by the time of the end of this journey. So as I looked, I looked at the guy to my left, and he gave me kind of a "I'm gonna be here" type of look. And I looked to my right, and I saw a guy that was, gave me a terrified look, like, oh, what did I get myself into? So I'm saying that to say we had another guy in our class. By the time we could get our uniforms, break our t-shirts in, our BDU's, before we can even buy our boots, we had another recruit that just didn't show up the next two days. He just didn't come back. And I said and thought, I think that actually took a little bit of, you know, self-reflection. I wouldn't have done it that way, but I wasn't mad at the decision that he came to because the job isn't for everyone. So so the cliche was true that they told us, so I guess it's not a cliche. You know, that the person to your left, the person to your right, you guys see we have 18 individuals here? So that's, if my math is correct, that's 21 people that didn't make it. So I just want to give a hand clap to my class just for still being here right now. So Instructor Morris. Instructor Morris, you know, he did, he did his best job to kind of shape us into medical jakes, as you would say. I know everybody won't understand that, but so we had those lifesaving study guides. We had those also famous scenarios to get us prepped to go ahead and do our precepting, you know, riding on AMR, getting our skills done, everything like that, so we can be prepared to serve the citizens of the cab. But our first major test, our first major milestone that we had a chance to accomplish was National Registry. And anybody in here who's a, works in EMS or is a firefighter, you guys know about National Registry. So as you can see, everyone's on stage, has passed that. They passed the National Registry to some degree. Some of us are still working on getting that A. What you guys will be useful is, you know, Lucas devices once you get to the field, so, but congratulations to you guys. And the special group down at the tower. So our first formal introduction to the crew on One Road was a, was a unforgettable one, to say the least. Instructor Gray, sorry, did his did his infamous, his infamous scream that you guys heard as he kind of got his ready. And Recruit Alden decided that was kind of funny. So he kind of gave out a laugh. And the next thing we know, we get back down to the tower, and Instructor Gray walks up to Alden, and he says, "You were the one that was laughing when we came up there." He said, "Laugh at me again, give me that laugh again." And Alden kind of did it kind of lightly. He's like, "No, give me a laugh from your belly, give me a real laugh." He said, "Ah, ah, ah," and then he just told him to shut up. And and I won't even, I'll keep this one in house. I won't even go into Instructor Hando and Mr. Domino, so I'll let that ride. But with that being said, the Fire Training Academy presented us with an entirely new set of challenges. In order to be successful there, you typically need a combination of, you know, smarts and strength. Usually if you have, if you're lacking in one, you know, you probably won't make it through. As a class, we witnessed many feats of strength followed immediately by laughable mistakes. We had a few in our class who did some silly stuff. I won't say any names, but you guys know who you are. For the most part, though, we had all our fair, we had our fair share of "what am I doing here" moments, all of us. You know those reconsiderations? But we've, we've arrived to some degree. So we're here, but we still have a tremendous amount of work to do. And we still, quite frankly, have to prove ourselves to you guys, to citizens, to everybody else that's on stage. We have a lot of work to do. So we thought we arrived, and then we got a burn day. Our first burn day came around. And I never saw those kind of facial expressions before in my entire life. You know, we had some pretty, I won't say arrogant, but confident guys in the class. And once I saw them coming out of the burn building for the first time, it looked like they had seen ghosts. So but through all that, though, the training at the tower, it was embedded in us that you can never know enough about a career that could potentially harm you and the others around you. So they instilled in us to make training a priority, so I want to give them a hand. So from going up and down and up and down the tower, to making sure the bundle has absolutely no air in it, Class 117 is truly ready and eager to help our brothers and sisters out in the field. So Class 117, for the last time, I'll ask you, turn to your left and turn to your right, and know that each of you has earned the opportunity to submit your place in this DeKalb County Fire Rescue family. And the real work begins now. Remember to treat this profession with the utmost respect. If you don't, the results could be dire for not only you, but your family as well. If you remain vigilant and never forget why you chose to join this family, you may have stumbled upon the greatest profession known to man. Once again, thank you all for your time and attention, and let's continue the celebration. And I have Recruit Maze present the plaque.
Good afternoon. So we wanted to make something that would remember both the impact of both all of the instructors and what the CAB has done for us. So we made our class plaque, and one thing very special about our plaque is the new patch for the department that we put on here, as we are the first class with this brand-new patch. So can I have Instructor Gray come up to accept this plaque for Classes 117 here?
Thank you. One more round of applause. Come on, one more round of applause. Okay, we're almost there, ladies and gentlemen, family and friends. So look to your left. No, I'm kidding. Before I bring Chief Fulham up, I just want to give a few instructions. If you have a loved one up here on stage, once we present the badges and we go through the promotional ceremony, we ask that as your family member stands, you come here to my right, your left. Come up on stage so you can have the opportunity to pin your loved one. Understood? Understood? It's 2:30 in the afternoon. I need more. Understood? Are you guys excited? One more time, are you guys excited? So last but not least, I'd like to bring Chief Fulham up to give the speech and the presentation of badges.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. So first of all, I do need you all to pick it up a little bit. Normally, we start off by saying, "This is a celebration." This is a celebration of your family members that have gone through 13 months, I believe it is, 13? 13 months of what was just talked about. Starting out in a room where they had a chance to not only meet myself, but meet some of the other command staff, some of their instructors. And what I think it was Recruit Cantrell mentioned. We do mention that quite often about the fact that we realize that a percentage of them are not going to be here, are not going to reach this point. So once again, give them a hand clap. You're gonna get some more opportunities to do that. That's the way you do it. Okay. So also, I want to recognize a few folks. We have some of these folks that are not here with us today, but without them, we don't get to this point. And first, it has to be our CEO, Michael Thurman. For those that live in the county, we have a somewhat unique government in that we have the person that's the day-to-day manager of the county is called a CEO. Michael Thurman has done an outstanding job leading the county through COVID, but also supporting not only public safety, but the fire department. So please give him a hand. Our Board of Commissioners that also give us a ton of support as it relates to funding our initiatives. Sometimes those initiatives that come before them may be difficult to understand, but they do listen, and typically, we get what we need. So thank you to the Commissioners. We do have a representative from Commissioner Brad, or excuse me, Patrick's office. Thank you for being here. To our director, our Public Safety Director, he's unable to be here. He would love to be here. He hasn't missed one, I believe, since he's been our director, but Public Safety Director Jack Lumpkin. I always kid about the fact that he's, he has a long career in police service. But he has a lot of knowledge about all of pub's, public safety, does an outstanding job, and I thank him for his support as well. And then, yep, you can give a hand. The members of the DeKalb County Fire Rescue Department, we have some of them that are in the room today. I tell you, I've been here eight years now. It's a little bit over eight. I can't be more proud of the men and women that serve this county each and every day. They do an outstanding job. We do have the finest, and I know we have some members of other departments here, but I believe we have the finest fire department in the southeast, if not the nation. Please give them a hand. To Chief Roberts and the training staff, once again, outstanding job. This has been tough, performing or having these training academies during COVID, but they have done an outstanding job adapting, getting these folks through. So once again, outstanding job. You may notice that there are some folks here in green shirts, very nice green shirts, that helped usher you in. This is the next recruit class, so they're, they don't get a break, right? They, tomorrow morning, do they get tomorrow off or no? No, no. All right, take tonight off, take tonight off. And tomorrow, they're right back at it. They got this recruit class that will be coming down to the tower. We have, part of this group teaches the EMT portion. They have a new group that's coming in. It just keeps going, and they keep turning out outstanding firefighters. So thank you very much for all the work that you all do. You can give them a clap. To the families of the recruits, once again, what a great day this is. I want to thank you for your sacrifices throughout the training period. I know it's been tough, once again. Normally, we're talking 42 weeks that it takes for our training. This, once again, was extended partially because of COVID, so thank you for enduring, being patient. We know that they missed, I see some children here, I know they missed maybe some events, couldn't give you 100% of their time. But thank you for